She's on her way. She started, she's running out of time. But she's, you know, she'll get there.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. For all call please. Mayor. Members Singleton.
Here.
Kane. Champion.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Powers. Here. How long do we all stand for the flag salute please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to read the public comments, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
And I believe, are they all, they're all about?
Patrick, did you want to speak under the actual budget item, or do you want to speak under public comments? Well, you actually want to try to be included in the budget, is that?
Well, it's gonna be something that specifically change to the budget on various methods, but also, um, but it can all be rolled into one.
To the budget, okay. And the other one's CIP, so nothing under public comments.
Okay, uh, it's been suggested that we give, um, okay.
I think that's under committee.
It's been suggested, if it's okay with council, we'll have a 30-minute, um, presentation on the budget and then get down to the, uh, funding requests and the allocations. Is that okay with the city council?
Sounds good.
Okay, and first of all, we have an urgent agenda item that needs to be talked about right now, so I'm going to, uh, put that over to our city manager, Jason.
Right. Good afternoon, mayor members of the city council. We do have one item that came up just at the last minute, literally today, and there is the ability for the council to add items to the agenda on an emergency basis, and it does require a four-fifth vote. Um, the item is at our Chabola Community Center. Our HVAC system is on its last legs, and, uh, we're requesting an appropriation from the city council. We actually have money budgeted, or proposing to have money budgeted next year to replace it, but we don't think it's gonna last to July 1. And so, we'll get into more details when we actually discuss the item, but at this time, I'm requesting the council, um, consider adding this item to the agenda. We can just put it at the back of the meeting and do it at the end of the meeting, but it does require a four-fifth vote.
So moved, so add to the agenda.
It's been moved and checked in it. Call for the vote, please Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton.
Hi.
Councilman Verkempian.
Hi.
Councilman Vercruz.
Hi.
Mayor Powers.
Hi. See, that's four out of five, so we're good. We're good to go. Jason, so we'll put it to you now, uh, to talk about the budget, please.
Go ahead and do a, talk about the budget first, and then we can get into the various requests later. I thought it would be important to kind of set the framework of what we're talking about, all these items all related to budgetary matters. My, I don't see my mic's on. If we can get the PowerPoint.
Is that on your computer? It's on?
It's over there.
Okay. Matt, it's not coming up.
It was, I just ran it through 10 minutes ago, so I know it's good to go. Oh, there it is.
Tried to go back.
You just had to walk close to it. Okay, this is the, the budget study session workshop relating to the recommended budget for 2015, fiscal year 2014-15, 2015-16. We do do a two-year budget here. Uh, we're not gonna be asking the council to adopt the budget this eve, this afternoon. Uh, we will source the input from the public and the council, and then make any final adjustments and bring that back to you at the next city council meeting, which is June 17th. So what I want to do now is provide some framework, some overall, the high points of the budget, and the budget document is available for members of the public to take a look at on the city's website, as well as in the city clerk's office. Um, but some brief overview items include, um, you know, the budget reflects signs of a slowly improving economy. As we all know, homes are being built again in our community, commercial projects are going up, and so that leads to improved conditions.
Can I interrupt just a minute? Do we have a copy of that, or are we just watching the PowerPoint?
Um, I actually do have a copy of that, although I left it on my desk.
Okay.
So, yeah, let me, Chief.
Just a question.
Grab some copies, it's right by my computer, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, like I was saying, the, the economy is improving. We see, we see signs of that all around the city. Walmart actually is having their grand opening tomorrow morning, 7:30, for those of you that are interested. And, uh, we have a number of new residential and commercial projects, which leads to increasing property tax, sales tax, et cetera, which we'll go into in more detail. At the same time, there are some, some cost drivers in the city that are happening, that have been happening, continue to occur. Perse costs, which is our retirement program costs, continue to, to go up. They're expected to go up more significantly in the coming years, um, through about 2020, 2021. Um, healthcare costs continue to go up. Minimum wage increases go into effect, uh, July 1, and then another minimum wage increase of $10 will go into effect on January 1, 2016. So largely, the, the budget is a status quo budget. There still are a lot of the cost-cutting measures that we put into place several years ago, when the economy first started going down. We froze a number of positions, we had some layoffs and some other things. A lot of those still are in place, but not all of them. We, we got rid of furloughs, uh, last year, as well as some other, other cost-cutting measures, but we still do have 13 frozen positions in the budget that are not recommended to be filled at this time, which does have an impact on the deliverability of, of, uh, services within the community. This is an overview of Perse costs. Looks like the chief found those documents, so we'll go ahead and pass those around. This is the annual Perse costs. You can see, uh, one, about one and three-quarter million dollars last year, 1.7 million dollars, uh, about 1.9 million dollars in the current year, 2 million dollars. You can see, when we, by the time we get down to 2019, 2020, we have about 2.8 million dollars estimated costs for our retirement. And this doesn't include the, any additional staff or, um, other things. This is just kind of status quo, uh, budget based on the existing staffing levels that we have right now. So that's about a $1 million increase over that period of time, which is obviously significant when you're talking about a $10 million general fund budget to have a million dollars in costs. Now, those are, all those costs are not general fund, it's about 80% of the, the costs are our general fund, but it's still a significant increase. And so, how do you pay for that? You need to have revenues coming in in order to offset those rising costs in future years.
The source on those, is that from CalPERS, or is that internally generated?
Then the, yeah, the actual numbers are internally generated, but the actual, um, rates, so, Perse generates estimates on what the, the employer rates are gonna be all the way through 2020. So we took their estimates as far as what the rates are gonna be.
Perceived costs.
Multiplied by our estimates as far as our payroll and all those kinds of things.
Thanks.
Okay, so here's some other kind of big pictures of some of the things we tried to do, and we did put the budget together. Um, like I said, it's largely status quo, but we did, uh, need to add some items to address some of the existing concerns, some of the things that council's talked about in the past. One of that, those items that we've had in our strategic planning document for several, for this last year is making better use of technology city-side, citywide, to improve efficiencies, deliver better customer service. So some of the things you find in the budget document are conversion to a trackit.net system, which is our building permit code enforcement system to allow us to, people to, to pay their building permits online, um, a better system that will, I think, help us be more efficient in how we deliver services in our community development department. Other kind of, uh, overhauls as far as technology are our financial, our finance department, financial systems. There's the addition of a Laserfish, which is document management system, electronic document management system that only the city clerk's office has right now. We're gonna be expanding that into our, our finance department, um, different processes in place for check processing, purchase orders, other things like that. We're trying to kind of automate some of our systems and be more reliant on technology. Uh, another system that we put in place a couple months ago that does have a budgetary component every year, there's an annual maintenance fee, is called Galt Connect. That's the mobile app that people are downloading on their phones, and that's been very popular. We get a lot of responses, a lot of requests through that system. So we're trying to reach out. I know the clerk's office done a great job over the last year of getting us on Twitter and Facebook and all those things. We're trying to reach out the best, best way we can, and there are budget numbers in each of the different departments relating to those, those information technology items. Other thing, other kind of strategic item that the council has asked about is building maintenance needs. The Chabola Center is just one of them, that HVAC unit that's going out. Um, there's a couple other major items that we need to look at in this coming budget. One is the PD, we're having leaks. Unfortunately, it's not a very old building, but we've got some significant issues with the roof, and so we have about an $88,000 fixed proposed for next year. Uh, continuing ongoing HVAC issues over there as well. There's some other, um, proposals across the city for improved maintenance now. What we have in the budget in no way addresses even a fraction of the deferred maintenance needs across the city. There are a lot of needs out there. We have aging buildings, aging equipment, but it's our, you know, what we can do with the funding that we have available is start to do some of the more urgent items first, so you see that, um, in the budget. So let's, let's take a step back now and kind of look at our general fund. General fund is where we derive most of our, our money to operate the city, where we pay our, most of our police officers, our, our staff on a day-to-day basis. We do have other funds, but general fund is the largest source of those funds. It's the one that's also most cyclical when it comes to the economy, the ups and downs. Um, as you note, in the budget, we have about a $1 million general fund balance reduction next year, based on a variety of things, which I'll go into in a minute. Um, but then the following year, we are projecting about $150,000 surplus in 1516. We're hoping that the, the city's budget will be stabilized thereafter. Again, you never know with the economy, but at least it's a positive sign that things are heading up in the right direction. So the general fund balance at the end of next year is, is actually the end of, uh, yeah, at the end of next year is projected at 5.6 million dollars. The end of the following year, it's projected at about 5.7, 5, 7.6 million dollars. That's the amount of money we have total in our fund balance. So that's reserves, that's operating money, that's everything that we have in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. And that contrasts with back in 2007, 2008, I think is where we hit our high point. We were at about 8.9 million dollars in our general fund balance. So it's well off from where we were at the peak, but certainly, I think it's good news, at least it appears to be stabilizing. This is kind of shows you where, where we've been. You can see with the economy, where things were rising, rising, and then this is where we fell off the cliff. This is the ending fund balance for the general fund. Kind of went down here, we dropped a million dollars, then a half million dollars, we went down a little bit more, then we came up, then we went back down, and then we're going back down, then we're going back up. So it's kind of been a wild ride for the city, uh, but we've made a lot of tough choices, decisions over the last several years, and I'm really, um, I'm optimistic about the future of our community and the city. I may think we've made some tough choices. I'm not saying there aren't gonna be more tough decisions going forward, but I think we've got the, um, a plan in place that'll allow us to be successful in the future. Council too, feel free, if you see something on one of these slides, if you want to interrupt me, raise your hand, whatever, feel free. I'm kinda gonna go relatively quickly, but I don't want you to feel like I'm just skipping through it, so if you need to pause and ask questions, just feel free to do so. Okay, let's take a look at revenues now. We're gonna focus first on the general fund. Uh, general fund revenues next year are estimated at about 8.6 million dollars, and following year about 9.1 million dollars. So overall, general fund revenues are projected to increase by a little over $600,000 next year, and then $500,000 the year after that. And so, why is that happening? I think I touched on a few of them. We'll go through some of those in greater detail about why we're seeing this revenue increase on the general fund, which is obviously good news. Some of, some of it is not all related to sales tax and property tax. Some of it is just this one item that I put at the top here, which is community development block grant. We typically get $150,000 a year in CDBGE funds. We built up several years because we've been working on design for projects, for our quiet zone project, our Central Galt Corridor, Complete Streets project, and so this next year, we're gonna be in a position, we're gonna start spending that money. So, um, that money only, only comes in after you spend it. And so, you'll see a bunch of, an increased revenue of $450,000, but it also, you have an increase in expenditure. So it doesn't really affect your fund balance, but it does affect your revenues. That's one of the reasons why you see your revenues going up.
On that particular subject, I, I was looking for the CDBG funds as part of the budget. They're hidden very well. You can't find them. I mean, it, there's nothing that says community development block grant. So in the future, I would appreciate if, for the, for purposes of the budget, that you could, it could be called out rather than the intergovernmental transfers or receipts of funds, 'cause I think it's all grouped together under one, one title heading now, uh, after talking with Inez and Finance, she kind of directed me to it, 'cause you can't tell where those monies are being spent unless you go page by page through the CIP and identify the project. There's no way to tell.
Right. I was gonna say, all, all the funding is in the CIP, and so it does call it out in the description of the project that it's CDBG funds, but on the summary sheets, it's not gonna show it.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna find out what, what the city is spending the community development block funds on, you can't find that. That source isn't there unless you go page by page looking for that specific source.
Gotcha.
So just in the future, I'd, I'd appreciate if we could identify, you know, as a, I don't know, whether you want to call it out, under the general fund revenues as a title, it used to be titled under general fund, but it just would make it easier, I think, for the, for the reader.
Break it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Okay, the next item up here is debt service from the police building loan. You get, the council might remember earlier this year approved a loan between the general fund and our police building fund, which is impact fees that were used to pay for the, the police building. We loaned money essentially, um, from the general fund to that, that fund, and then it's gonna be paid back. And so what you see in the two-year budget each year, you see about $230,000 coming back in to the general fund as a repayment for that loan. And so that shows your, your revenues going up. An important thing on that is it's only gonna last for three years, so it's gonna be some increased revenue, um, but it's only a three-year funding source. The next item is property tax. That's one of our big, uh, revenue sources, and you can see it going up next year by about $170,000, and in the following year, another $263,000. So our total property tax revenue for the city next year is estimated at about 3.6 million dollars, and then the following year, about almost $4 million, 3.93 million dollars. So that's a nice increase. We're finally starting to see property values go up, and have been going up for the last year or so. Um, sales tax, it's another big increase that we're seeing, largely due to Walmart. You can see in the first year, it's about $278,000. It's not a full year, because Walmart's just opening up right now, and it's always one quarter behind, so we have most of a full year, but we're, I think, one or two months short of a full year, so it's a little bit less than that. Falling year, we'll have a full year's worth of Walmart. Um, so that you can see the, the total estimated sales tax next year is 1.85 million, and then the following year is a little over $2 million. We finally hit that $2 million mark. Um, just a, a small note for members of the public, and I know the council's aware of this, City of Galt is very much a retail poor community, meaning we don't have a lot of retail stores, and our community shouldn't be too much of a shock, but that means our sales tax numbers are very low on a per capita basis compared to other cities across the state, which makes it difficult to fund our, a lot of our programs that we have. Um, but I think, that's why I think Walmart is such a big deal for our community, 'cause we don't really have stores like that right now. The last significant one for the general fund as far as revenues is development-related fees. Um, these are both in our engineering departments and our public works department, as well as in our planning and building department. And so, next year, we're projecting total building-related fees. This doesn't impact fees, this is just, you know, building fees, permit fees, about $412,000, and then the next year, $823,000. It's not just building permit fees itself, but all fees related to that. So it's plan check, it's engineering plan check, it's, you know, all the different fees that builders and developers pay, uh, throughout, throughout the year for their, their development. Okay, so that's kind of the highlight on revenues from the general fund. Next category is Culture Recreation Fund, and this, again, is another major funding source that we have for day-to-day operations of the city related to our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as park maintenance that is, that's in our Public Works Department. So the, the concern here, as you can see from the trend line that we show, is Galt Market revenue has gone down. Um, it's, it's pretty stable right now, but it has gone down from its peak. You can see up here, the Galt Market was generating about, uh, 3.5 million dollars, three and a half million dollars a year in revenue. Then we really started to fall off, um, and we, we kind of went back up to about 3 million, and now we're down at about 2.8, and we think that hopefully this is kind of where it's gonna level off. But it is a, a risk, I think, in the future for our community, is what's gonna happen with the Galt Market. I think, uh, we're trying to position ourselves so that it will be very successful in future years, but the changing, I think, uh, tastes of the consumers and spending habits as far as online shopping and things, certainly gonna have an impact on that going forward. So, um, this is a, a major funding source that does have some risk element to it, because if this goes down, then we'll have to look at really cutting back a lot more of our Parks and Recreation operations, um, including landscaping and all the other things that we do with those funds. So, um, you can see we have the revenue decrease this year, about $200,000 in the current year, and then that, that's expected to stay flat for the, the next two years. The only other major, I think, significant change we see in Fund Six, which is Culture Recreation Fund, is this Harvey Park rehabilitation grant that we applied for, and we're expecting to hear final word about, hopefully in the next month. Uh, we're projecting it 174. They could, they could fund us at a lower amount. We won't know for sure, like I said, for another month or so. Hopefully that goes through, and then you'll see on the CIP side that there is a project that would put that money to good use over at Harvey Park. And we'll be coming back to you later, once we get the grant award, to determine how exactly we want to spend that money in that park. The next major category of revenues is enterprise funds. This is our business-like fund, so this includes water, sewer, storm drain, and solid waste. Um, we provide the first three ourselves, the fourth solid waste, we contract with cow waste to provide. Not a lot of changes here, pretty much is inflationary adjustments that we anticipated on, on an annual basis, at least that's what's in the, in the budget. And then also, there's the state revolving fund loan amount that we have in there, that shows up, and a revenue source from our, on the wastewater side, um, and any other grant money that we receive also shows up in the enterprise fund. But, um, any other, uh, revenue adjustments or fee increases that might go into effect in the year, those will require future council action. Those are not reflected in this budget, with the exception of a solid waste, that's the second point right here, solid waste revenues in 15, um, 16, so the second year. Assume an adoption of a 2% admin fee in March of 2015 to fully cover the city's support costs and eliminate annual general fund subsidy. So right now, we're not collecting enough money on the solid waves to fully cover our costs of administering the program. Doesn't cover all of our costs, and so the general fund is subsidizing the solid waste fund and has been for a couple of years. And so our proposal, we actually brought this up at the council meeting last year, and we didn't, we didn't implement it this year. We're now proposing to, to make it effective in March of 2015, so it'll be just the beginning part of this next year. That'll have to go through a Prop 218 noticing, uh, process, and then come back to the council for adoption, so you're not acting on that fee tonight. It's just a heads up that the, that revenue is in the budget, so if for whatever reason the council chooses not to adopt that fee, then that means that you'll have to take $58,000 out of the general fund the following year to subsidize that, that fund. And so that'll be a future, I think, choice and decision by the council. Okay, the next one is probably one, this, this one is maybe the biggest item, I think, for the council's consideration tonight. This is the, the plight of our landscape and lighting districts. We've been, I went back and looked through previous budgets, and we've been, we've been, I think, predicting this day for probably the last four years. Every budget we present to the council, we say, "Landscape and Lighting Districts are in deficit position. Every year, the fund balance is going down. We're gonna have to look at either significantly cutting back services, which means not mowing lawns, you know, letting the weeds grow tall, or we need to go back to the, the homeowners and ask for an increase on Landscape and Lighting District fees." There's just, they, they were set up 20, 25 years ago, and they've not been adjusted once. There's no cost of living adjustments, they're static, and obviously costs go up in that period of time, and so at some point, you need to make adjustments to, um, to properly pay for those services. So that includes those, what those, those districts pay for is mainly landscaping services, but also lighting. So streetlights, all those things that you see in our neighborhoods, that's what that, uh, those funds pay for. We have three Landscape and Lighting Districts, one in the northeast area, one on the west side, and then what we call LNL Number Three, which is all new development after a certain date. I can't remember exactly when it was. It's, it's by far our smallest district, um, and that one is not in as significant of a whole, because if that one does, it's the only one that does have a CPI adjustment. So every year, we make inflationary adjustments to that fee to keep up. The other ones are locked in place. And so you can see here on the second bullet point, um, the west side LNL runs out of money, and in, in this first year, actually. So if we don't make, take an action this, this year, in early 2015, is what we're recommending, then the west side will be out of money, and we'll be looking at significant cuts on that side for landscape and lighting services. And so we're gonna be looking at doing a, a vote, a ballot for property owners, and see if they want to increase, if they, if they want to pay to provide those services within their neighborhoods. And that's, that's something the city council can do, it's not something I can do, it requires a vote of the people. And so we'll be getting the information out, um, later this year, and asking the voters if they want to, if they want to do that. So this is just a slide that shows kind of where we've been from our Landscape and Lighting Districts over the last seven years or so, and you can see, the, the northeast one is really on a, on a, uh, slide. Um, the other one's kind of been stable the last three years, where you can kind of see it starting to, to go down, um, but it doesn't have much of a cushion. You know, it's been right around $100,000 in, in fund balance for a while now, and there's not much there. The northeast side started really high, but the costs are just way outstripping the revenues coming in. So that, that's where you have the need. You can see both of them. The first, in the north, or the west side runs out of money, um, in the first year, and the northeast side runs out of money at the end of the second year. So, um, we could, the council could just move forward and vote on the west side, or ask the voters on the left side to do that one, and then do the northeast one the next year, when we actually run out of money, but our, our suggestion is we just do them at the same time. Uh, but certainly that'll be a decision point later in the year. We're not asking you to take any vote on this tonight. All of this is just information, giving you a heads up that this is coming down the road, and we'll be bringing it back to you later this year to make some final decisions and determinations again. The budget does reflect, um, the fact that if this does not happen, then we're gonna have to make some significant cuts. to have to make some significant cuts. Okay, so that's the, the revenue side. Let's get in on the expenditure side now. This slide up here shows citywide expenditures, so those all city funds, what about $29 million? And general fund and Culture Recreation Fund, we often talk about those together because they really are linked. They're about $14.3, $15 to $15 million in the first year and that's $14 million in the next year. And some of the variance is because, I mentioned in that first year, we have the CDPG expenditures, so that $450,000 really jacks up your costs in that one year and then you see it go down a little bit. So that's really the, some of the big driver there, but the budget itself is relatively stable, costs are going up, but we're not. And we are adding, we're proposing to add some, some, some of the things I talked about, maintenance items and IT items as well, some positions, which I'll get into in a second. And so those are some of the main drivers. So some of the big drivers include, like I said, CDPG, the PERS increases, retiree health, some new positions that are recommended, facility maintenance projects, IT improvements, et cetera. And as you go through the individual pages for each department, it'll describe exactly what, whether they have new proposals, if there's a new request for a service or a piece of equipment, it's outlined in there. My, my intent right now is not to go through every department in detail. I know you guys have the, the budget document, it's on, available on our website for members of the public to take a look at at the end of this. We, you guys can, or whenever you want to do it, you can ask questions, we can go through, we have all the documents, we can go through to the, the smallest line item that you want to go through, but I'm not going to do that as part of my presentation. There are detailed descriptions in each department budget within the document that you have. So, and I know staff here is available to answer any questions. That you have, they have all their stuff, so if there's anything that piqued your interest or you had concern about, certainly we want to, we want to hear about it, we'll be able to answer the questions that you have. And I would suggest that we do that at the end, we'll finish my presentation and then if the council has questions, they want to go through that, then we can do that. Does that work for you, Mayor? Unless the council wants to go through the individual questions on the departmental budgets right now.
I, I was hoping we'd do public comments, then come back to, so everybody just have to wait around for comments.
Okay.
Which could be long and, or not.
Right. So maybe what we'll do is I'll finish my presentation, we'll get the public comment and then, then council wants to ask more questions at, at that point, we can do that?
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a good idea? Okay. Okay, so some of the, I will highlight the, what I consider the really significant items, which is anytime you have staffing changes or recommendations, those are always of interest, I think, to the city council and members of the public. And so I'm going to go through briefly some of the, the major highlights, and these are all the, the changes on personnel or the staffing side of things. So the first recommendation is that we unfreeze, we have a couple of actually frozen building inspector positions. When the economy went down, we were able to freeze some positions because there wasn't a lot of building activity going on. Everybody knows now that's not the case, so we have one building inspector, actually one senior building inspector, so we're proposing to eliminate a part-time temporary position that we have, convert that position into a full-time position in our building department. The next one is to add a senior wastewater operator position. That's associated with the upgrades out of the wastewater treatment plant, they really are in need of an additional operator. This one would be at a senior level to provide some supervision to some of the other staff. Another recommendation is to add a senior accounting assistant in the finance department and to eliminate an existing temporary part-time staff in that department. Now this, this position is largely related to the anticipated impacts of the water meter implementation program. Once the entire city's on water meters, we're anticipating a lot more calls and questions and setups and all the things that go along with that program. Right now, people's water bills are, most of them are flat. There's not a lot of questions on a flat bill. When you start metering them, people's going to be, why my bill go up? Why my bill go down? Why am I paying, you know, so there's going to be a lot more work and so part of that is associated with that, that effort. I believe when we did the, the cost analysis study for the water meters, they actually recommended maybe one and a half positions in the finance department. We're recommending just adding one right now and seeing how it goes, we'll maybe back at a later date if we think the need is there. Another change we're recommending is reclassifying the IT coordinator position to an IT manager position to better reflect the true nature of the, of the position and similarity to other similar positions in our comparator jurisdictions. Another recommendation is to eliminate the special projects administrator position that's in the Galt market and to reclassify the market operations supervisor. We talked before about when Armando Solis was promoted to Parks and Recreation Director, that we would not be filling his former position, which is the, the special projects administrator position, and so this is kind of official formal action by the council to eliminate that position. The next one is to, right now, we're in the past, we had a supervising administrative assistant. When, when Ann Dennis was promoted to a analyst position, it opened up an admin assistant position and, and talking with Steve Winkler, he's recommending that that position be reclassified to just an admin assistant rather than a supervising admin assistant, so we're moving forward with that. And then the final one is reclassifying the engineering tech position to a supervising engineering tech position. We had both positions and the, the supervising engineering tech position was actually a frozen position, been frozen for several years. We have an incumbent right now that's been doing a great job, we're recommending that he be, that that position essentially be, be changed, so the supervising tech position becomes unfrozen and open and it's, and the engineering, engineering tech position then becomes frozen. So we're not adding any additional positions, we're just swapping the two positions, if that makes sense. And that's the extent of the personnel staffing changes that we're recommending to the council. There are, the next category of items that we have here are transfers. So this is, most of these are related to our cost allocation plan, but anytime you have a transfer from one fund to another, it's considered and classified as a transfer. So if you're transferring money from the general fund to Fund Six or vice versa, that's a transfer. And transfers generally are used to pay for cost of service. We've talked about that in the past, so billing and collection provides services to water and sewer for their billing services, then there's money then that goes from fund, or the water fund and the sewer fund to pay back the general fund for providing those services. That's our cost allocation plan that we have, and those are through transfers. But there's other kind of transfers, I'm going to get into some of those in just a second. The first transfer that's significant in here is the Culture Recreation Fund, as we've talked about in the past, is unable to fully provide support itself for its cost of services, so a general fund transfer is required in the current year, in the first year and the second year, and the amounts are listed up here, $209,000 in the first, in the current year, $384,000 in year one, and then $280,000 in year two. That's basically because the revenues in the market are no longer sufficient to fully cover the cost of operating of all of our Parks and Recreation programs, so the general fund has to provide a subsidy for that. Excuse me. Another recommendation, and you'll hear about that in a little bit from our finance director, Inez, is recommending that we add the police services to our cost allocation plan. We used to do this years ago and it was, it was done away with. And this is, for example, if we get a call out in the middle of the night for a water sewer emergency, our police department is, is, and our dispatchers are picking up the phone and they're dispatching public works crews to come out and fix the water sewer service. And so we believe that there should be a, excuse me, a cost allocation. So the water and sewer fees should pay back the general fund for the time and effort spent by our police officers and/or our dispatchers in providing service to our water and sewer fund. And so, so that just then becomes that, the time spent doing that then gets tracked and it gets accounted for and included as part of the cost allocation plan, similar to the other funds that we have. Okay, the next one is a repayment from a prior loan to the general fund from Fund 11 Police Building. We didn't have enough money a couple of years ago to pay the debt service on our police building, remember we talked about this, and so we had to loan money, the general fund had to loan money to the police building fund. Now we have money and so that money's being repaid, so the general fund is being repaid for that prior loan. Okay, the next one is what we are, also already talked about, which is a second loan between the general fund and the police, police building. In this case, the general fund loan money to Fund 11 Police Building to pay off the debt. So we made a transfer of $670,000, that's how much debt service was left in that police building. We said, and continuing to pay, we don't want to continue to pay these high interest rates, we said, let's do an internal loan, we'll take money from our general fund, we'll pay off that debt, then we'll pay ourselves back in interest. And so that, you see that in the transfers, it's $670,000. The next one is a transfer, the Culture Recreation Fund to Landscape and Lighting District Number Three, which is Fund 37, in the amount of $27,500. There, there, there's not enough money in that fund to fully fund the operations of that district, largely because of Walker Park and the costs associated with maintaining that, that fund. There aren't enough homes yet left in that fund to fully pay for those services, and so we are recommending a one-time transfer from Culture Recreation into that fund to balance it out. But the good news is, based on projections from our community development department and what we think is going to happen over the next couple of years, that we think there will be enough revenue generated in the future to pay for those costs, partly because you have new homes coming on, partly also because we have a cost of living adjustment included in there. So we hope that that's a one-time transfer to balance that fund. And the final one, we talked about as well, is a transfer from the general fund to solid waste to help to balance that fund. So hopefully it's just a one-year transfer when the, the fee is implemented, 2%, if that's implemented in March, then the following year, we won't have to make that subsidy. If that fee is not implemented, then there would be a subsidy in that second year. So what's the, the future outlook, what's the, kind of the big picture on some of these things? Good news is that we have a budget, a balanced budget in fiscal year 1516 with no use of reserves in that year. Keep in mind that there are no assumptions in here when it comes to salary benefit increases for employees, we are currently in negotiations with employees, so whatever comes out of those negotiations would be added to the budget. So I got a little extra extraneous number in there. But the next one is, you know, one of the things that I think you'll, you'll realize when you work through the budget is, we do have a lot of projections when it comes to growth, development. I think we were relatively conservative, we talked to the developers trying to get their plans, we didn't take their word for it, I think we were more conservative and we brought those numbers back down to earth, but they still are guesses, they're best guesses, estimates of what we think the future holds for development. And so I think they're conservative, but you never know with the economy and you start, the further out you go, the more risk there is, but, you know, if something happens with the economy that really causes it to crash, then, then I think we would need to revisit some things, but we're pretty comfortable in what, what we've got listed up here. The other, I think, big concern going forward is listed deferred maintenance projects. We have a lot of older buildings, we have a lot of older equipment, and we just, and streets and you name it, we just haven't been able to put as much money into those things as we've wanted to over the last, you name it, ever. You never have enough money to be able to put into, into those things and at some point it comes back to bite you because you have to do it, you can't have a senior center without air conditioning. And so, you know, I think it's something that we're going to need to continue to invest in every year, we need to continue to set money aside, but there's never going to be enough to do all that we can, and so just understand that that's just the reality of where we are and we'll continue to do our best to, to fund that.
On that subject, I had mentioned earlier about my concern with the Littleton Center and the kitchen facilities, and I didn't see anything in the budget, I didn't see, I don't see anything in the capital or in the CIP that addresses those issues either, but I do see where Chibola is scheduled to get new ovens and stoves. So I'm just wondering where we are on that.
I think Chibola was not scheduled to get ovens and stoves until, I think, in like the third year.
1516, I believe.
And I, I know I asked Steve Winkler and his staff to prepare some budget estimates as far as the ovens over at Littleton, I'm not sure, hopefully they're, they have those this evening.
The update, and Aiden is here and can give a further update along with Armando, if they've got more details to add, but we did review, we're, we're having some issues with getting parks and older, older commercial ovens and refrigeration units and things at the various centers, and we kind of prioritized them and we actually, based on the usage and the commitments for those centers, that we actually found that Chibola had a higher need for that. Littleton is still functional, there is a door problem with one of the, one of the ovens, but they still work and they get very little use over there, so we're recommending that the priority be to the center with the most use of the oven facilities and if I got that wrong, staff, here's your chance to correct me.
How do we know what the cost estimate was to, are the, are the ovens working at Littleton, are all of them working right now?
My, my understanding is yes, we've got, like I say, got some handles.
Is that, is that recent? Because two months ago, there was one and a half of three working, because that, that's new information then. And there had to have been some repairs, there was only one and a half of the stoves. One half of one stove was working, the middle one didn't work at all, and the one on the left, or excuse me, the right, is the only one that worked, so.
We could take another look, my understanding is there might have been some pilot light issues and things and, and my understanding is we got those taken care of.
Okay, yeah. But was there an estimate done on replacement costs or anything along those lines?
Yeah, about $5,000 to $6,000 per unit and we, we are, have those in the plan, they're just not in the two-year outlook.
So for, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's three stoves there?
I'm still learning our facilities, I'm looking at staff and they're saying yes.
Okay. Well, I'd like to reserve further discussion on that topic.
Thank you.
I know I, I did talk to, to staff and I know one staff that has used that facility on numerous occasions said, some of those ovens require a little TLC, you need to kind of know how to turn them on and how to operate them, and so sometimes we've had groups come in there and say that they don't work and it's just a matter of turning the right knob and the right button and to make sure it gets done right.
Well, it's, it's the warm-up time. If you're going to cook in the afternoon, you have to get there by 7, 7:30 in the morning to make sure they're warm enough by noon to cook on. And obviously, if you don't know that, then it's not going to work. I mean, there, I, I think it goes beyond just TLC and minor adjustments, I mean, they've been there since, what, whenever this building was constructed, 1979, and I think we really seriously need to think about replacing them, given the fact that, you know, we have rent, rent generated, at least the last estimate I saw was about $9,000 a year based on the, the users. We do, the community does use it a lot for free and, and, you know, rightfully so to some of the nonprofit organizations, but I think that if we're going to have a facility, they should, there should be a reasonable expectation that it works. When you turn it on, it warms up for it, you don't have to get there, you know, five or six hours ahead of time in order to cook, so, anyway.
So the cost is about $16,500 for all three?
During that ballpark, yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, we've already talked about, so the deferred maintenance projects, future risks, PERS costs going up, healthcare costs, Galt market revenues. I think the other, the big point, I think, that you've heard throughout this, which is the need for additional revenue to maintain existing service levels. So the, the two items that we've already talked about are solid waste, admin fee, that 2%, the landscape and lighting district increases. The third one, we're going to talk about in just a few minutes, which is the user fee study, that's a step of staff report, we're going to be going through that, but we, we simply need to find, we've done all we can to cut costs and at some point, you need to find additional revenues in order to, to, to provide the services that the community expects. And so that's why we are bringing some of these things forward to the city council for consideration. Just briefly, I did want to give Inez a few minutes to talk about some new features in the budget and her and her staff have worked very hard and, and all of our staff, and I'll talk just after Inez has done a little bit more about that, but I do want to give her a minute to maybe just go through with the council and the members of the public about some of the new features in the budget.
Good afternoon, council, mayor and community members. I did want to just go over a couple of items that we added this year. One of the goals that the department had was just to find ways that we could expand on some of the charts and just the information that's contained in the budget. And there's not a full bunch of information here, but I did at least want to bring to your attention a couple of things that we did include this year. One of them is the mission statement, in the budget document itself, it's located on Romanu- It's located on Romanu, page thirteen, not yet. Oh, sure, yeah, you can now, we have bookmarks. But as Council is familiar, we go through every six months through the strategic planning process, and we go back and we revisit our mission statement, our vision statement, our organizational values. And we just thought it was important to share that with the community as part of the budget process, because a lot of the decisions that are made are based on our three-year goal. So we thought it was important to include this in our budget document, and that is on page thirteen of the document itself. Another new feature that you'll see is fund balance. What is fund balance? And if you notice on what Matt has presented, is we now, on the electronic version, we'll now have the budget bookmarks. So instead of flipping through the pages and trying to see if you got to the right section, so that's kind of a handy tool that we're quite free with. So what is fund balance? Over the last year, there were different processes that the city was involved in, and we would get the question like, well, what is presented on Schedule Four? Since that's what, how much money we have available, but that's sometimes a little different than fund balance in the year-end financial audit. And so there is a difference between the actual total fund balance and the amount that we include in Schedule Four. So this is just to present that difference. And at the very bottom of what is fund balance, most of the information that is included in Schedule Four is under the unassigned at this point. The other document that we included that we hope that is of value is called a guide. It's a guide to the budget summary pages. We had some questions over the past year or so that they really, community members did not know how to read the actual departmental statements. And I know, Council, we had a session before on expenditure reports, revenue reports, but the community at large were unfamiliar with how to read our documents. So we decided to add this small how-to-use our departmental statements, and if you can see the signs, it's the fiscal entity, the department is basically the component of the fund and so forth. So we thought this would be a useful tool to the community members. Some of the other things that we've been involved with the webinars on try to, how to enhance the budget document, a couple of things that we are working on, and we hope that maybe during the next midterm or the next two-year budget processes, scheduling citizen input in the process, providing more trendline information within the document. I know that the city manager has included that in the PowerPoint presentation, but we're hoping that we can incorporate that in the actual document. Actually, I know that CAP presents a check to the city every year on what their dollar value is on volunteer hours. We'd like to see if we can capture that more on a global basis for the tighter cities. And then hopefully at the end of the whole process, come up with some type of the video that council members or we could share with some of our community service organizations on, a little bit about the city of Galt, and in a video format. So we're trying to see if we can cooperate with the high school or so forth on, trying to get them involved and create a video for the city of Galt. So those are just some ideas that we've been brainstorming, these are the items that actually made it to the final cut. But with that, we also have some videos or some electronic enhancements, and one of them that you do see is the bookmarks that Matt has presented. And then Matt, if you want to just show us to the next section, the PowerPoint.
So we have the bookmarks, which mirror the table of contents in the printed document. And if you go to the table of contents in the electronic version, we have hyperlinks. So you can just click on that, and it'll take you to that section. So it makes it a lot easier to follow through the document, because currently it's just scanned version of the printed, so it's two-hundred-and-seventy-seven pages you have to flip through to try and find, and it doesn't match the numbered pages. So this makes it a lot easier to use the printed document or the electronic document.
So if you're interested in just looking straight at one individual apartment, just flipping through the pages, you can just click on the link, and it will take you straight to. So I know that Matt spent some time on this, and so we want to at least share that one. It will be the other ones to get the electronic version of the adopted budget, but we at least wanted to present it this evening or this afternoon to Council and to the community. So with that, I think that's what I want to present.
That's actually really helpful for the public that go online to make it easy to find items in the budget that you're looking for. So thank you to the Finance Department and Matt for putting that together. So that's, that's pretty much it for staff's presentation. I do want to acknowledge again the hard work by all of your departments in putting this budget document together, particularly the Finance Department, a lot of weekends and late nights, and all the departments, I think, worked really hard. Everybody takes their job very seriously. They want to do a good job for the council, for the community, and they are very good stewards of their public dollars. And they want to make sure that the money is spent as wisely as possible, the money that we have is spent for the best use and best purpose in the community. We want to make sure that we do the council and the community proud, and so you should be proud of the job that your staff has done in putting this together, but also in delivering the services that they do from every person in the city, the great job that they do in delivering services on a day-to-day basis. So I'm proud to be the city manager and this community, work for the city, city council, and for the great staff that we have, and they should be recognized for the good works that they do do. And so with that, I would suggest, and I think the mayor maybe suggested that we get some public input at this point, and then if you want to hold the council's comments and discussion to the end, if that's what the council wants to do, that would be fine.
Okay, so let's go to public comment. Patrick Flatter?
Good evening, or afternoon, for change, council members. Here today on behalf of CHAMP. Sure all of you are aware of who we are, what we are, and what we're doing. For the people in the audience that are not familiar with us, we are a nonprofit group that's currently in the process of raising funds for the Kevin Ton Memorial and the Fallen Heroes Memorial Project that's been proposed to the city. My normal course is to come before you folks and fly off the cuff. Today, I'm going to give you a written and presentation that I will read to you so that it's read into the record. On behalf of CHAMP, we're here today on behalf of our organization, as well as thousands of Galt residents who have supported our efforts to build the Kevin Ton Fallen Heroes Memorial, because of two issues that we believe are of major importance to this project. First, within the next hour, a part of the agenda for this council will be to receive the biannual budget and to provide direction to staff on any proposed changes or modifications to the recommended budget. Of concern to CHAMP are two major questions. Is this memorial project an item that will be funded within the proposed budget? And if the answer is no, then the question all of you should be asking yourselves is, why not? The growing public perspective and that of our committee is that this project has not been given the priority that it should or needs to have. As many of you are aware, within the past sixty days alone, Officer Ton has been publicly recognized and currently memorialized in two separate ceremonies within the state of California, as well as the National Memorial Project three thousand miles away in Washington, DC. Yet, here we are, six months away from the second anniversary of his death, here in Galt, and the place where he gave his life, for this community, with this project not only uncompleted, but without even a proposed groundbreaking date or a sound and definitive financial commitment from this body. In the interim period since this project was initially approved by the council last year, hundreds of thousands of dollars in funding have been approved to quote "beautify" the freeway overpasses that lay less than a thousand yards away from this chamber. And it has recently come to our attention that additional grant funding has been directed to further beautify Harvey Park, as well as the development of a public garden on the site immediately, immediately adjacent to Harvey Park, which we note was rejected and deemed unsuitable for the initial idea of building the Kevin Ton Memorial Dog Park. We feel that this is a travesty and should be an embarrassment. Additionally, yesterday, we were provided notice only upon our own inquiry that the memorial project, which had been scheduled as an agenda item for next Tuesday's city council meeting, had been removed, scheduled to July fifteenth. The basis for this rescheduling was unwarranted in that not only should the council be kept informed as to the status of this project and the purported reasons for its ongoing delays, so should the public, who has contributed tens of thousands of dollars through CHAMP's force to these, towards what is the city's responsibility. CHAMP has been burdened with the task of accountability to these individuals and to the sponsors of our events, who have supported this cause and have asked repeatedly and with more frequency, where is this memorial? It is now time for the council to shift the dynamic of this accountability to themselves by placing this project within the purview of this budgeting process and to instruct staff to prioritize and fast-track this project and bring this memorial project to fruition. This community is supportive of the project. Kevin Ton and his memory are deserving of this project. The police officers and first responders who put their lives at risk on a daily basis in this community are deserving of this project in knowing that they also, excuse me, in knowing that should they also someday be called upon to make the ultimate sacrifice on our behalf, that they will not be forgotten. We ask you to make this happen and fund this project now.
Thank you, Patrick.
Before I leave the podium, I also want to hand out, you guys can just distribute these across, because we are a nonprofit and we are fundraising for this project, this is the calendar of the remaining two thousand fourteen events that all you folks can be present at, at your own discretion. Smiling faces from the council are almost appreciated, and we hope that we get you out there to support this project like the rest of the community has been supporting us. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Pat. Is there, what was the reason, or was it scheduled to be the next, next council meeting or something for consideration?
Steve, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, we had met with the advisory committee to look at a path forward to try to get this on fast track. At that time, they said, well, what would the timeframe be? Our current task, it's in the Public Works Ballpark, is we're trying to solicit some discounted engineering or architectural support services to bring this to fruition. The budget is currently not established to fund a full-blown private sector help, so we're reaching out to some consultants who have done a significant amount of work for the city that are qualified to see if they might be willing to either do an in-kind donation or a discounted fee. That solicitation is out to those select consultants, and we're anticipating some replies. Unfortunately, we didn't, we originally thought we might be able to bring back recommendations at June seventeenth, when we got with the committee about six weeks ago, and we're running a little behind that. So our current estimate is in a couple of meetings from now, probably July first meeting. We'll, we'll have that information in hand. I believe actually we indicated July fifteenth would be probably, as we can get it on the agenda with some actual recommendations. We can give you an update in the meantime if you'd like. So that's where we're at.
Also, and maybe I'm not completely informed on this issue, but I thought this was a, initially, was it to be a privately funded effort, or was it private and public? I'm not sure what the funding scheme or program was.
The city council hasn't committed funding to the project other than design and support, staffing, that kind of thing. I think the last time we brought a report to the city council was maybe in December of last year, and we indicated that, that the city's commitment was that, and then the fundraising committee was doing their fundraising. And then depending on how much they were able to fund, fundraise, then the city council may wish to designate a certain amount to make up whatever gap is necessary to fund the project. And so I think last, at our meeting that we had about six weeks ago, I believe, that CHAMP indicated that their goal was to raise about fifty thousand dollars that they thought they could hit by the end of the year. I don't know if that number is still accurate or not, and that they were requesting or hoping that the council would match that funding commitment through both design and construction. Like that was, that was the message that was made.
But we don't have any cost estimates from what I'm hearing for the facility itself.
Yes.
Preliminary for a phased approach, that an initial phase that would get the basic memorial and some basic amenities in place, might not be a full plaza, might not be full benches, might not be lighted flagpoles, but to get a memorial in place that could then be added to as additional funds are raised or with future commitments. Our initial phase thought would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars, including engineering. And I think we're leaning towards making a specific recommendation for a city contribution as part of recommending that we award a design contract.
And we also talked about in that meeting was, six weeks ago or so, is that we could also possibly do this in phases to help with the fundraising efforts. But I would like to ask council tonight, and hopefully get a commitment from the city, if we could, we could match their fundraising efforts, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, but also include their design with them. If council would so agree that we could.
Where's CHAMP at this point on your side?
Well, you know, in all deference to the comments that have been made and stuff here, this was exactly the, one of the issues that we wanted to be able to address with you on the seventeenth, and we're disappointed that we were removed from the agenda for that day. There's a definitive communication breakdown between the council, the city manager, the CHAMP membership themselves, and the community. We need to communicate to you folks, you know, in a tighter manner, so that everybody's on the same page here as to what's going on and when it's going to go on and what we anticipate. I mean, our books are open to everybody from the council and the city in terms of... So, you know, you're going to, you're welcome to come to any of these meetings. Part of the issue that's been brought to our attention again and again at the meetings is that it's a he-said, she-said situation about what is, in terms of what was an actual commitment to us when we undertook this role. A majority of the people, and I will tell you flat out, a majority of the people that are on the core of this committee are also city employees. These are people that initiated this effort, that work for the city as paid employees, and then after hours, work another four or five hours a day towards, dedicated towards this project. These are people who want this project to move forward and are also bearing the brunt of having to carry a burden, both emotionally and everything else, of working in an environment, and this isn't anything that was said to them, but it's clear from our dynamics in our meetings, working in an environment that they don't feel that we're getting the support. And they all know that you guys are good people. They all know that we want this project done as a community. But it's up to you guys to make the commitment. I mean, it needs to be on paper, a financial commitment, and tell us what you're going to do, when it's going to happen. You know, when I hear that, you know, letters are out for solicitation and all this kind of stuff, that's all well and fine, but this project wasn't hatched yesterday. This project has been in front of you guys now for well over a year. You've seen the, you've seen the drawings. We've gone out of our way to reduce costs in every way that we can, in terms of going to the high school and having them actually design the memorial. All these things have all been done to cut costs. Personally, I'm not a big fan of the idea of sending this project out for outside engineering or anything else. We have people that work for the city that are qualified, you know, educational and licensed to be able to guide this project and to help with getting this project done. And with all the, you know, the brain power that's sitting here before us, I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation to say that if we get a commitment from you guys, I mean, our fundraising efforts are on that little card. We've got more projects and more events planned through the rest of this year, and we expect to raise more money. So, you know, we need the commitment from you, and so does the community.
And my question, the answer to my question is, I asked what you had raised to date, was my question. was my question.
I'm personally not privy to the dollar amount, but perhaps when the next speaker comes, she can address that with you, she's a little more privy. I will tell you that we are, at this point, in excess of $30,000.
Okay. And I don't think that, you know, I get the sense that you're frustrated. That's very clear.
That's a very clear statement.
To be honest with you, I was unaware of the concerns and, you know, not that I can make a big difference, but I think that what staff has told you is a very reasonable explanation, knowing what the public process is in order to get a public works project done. I don't think they're dragging their feet, I don't think that the city has lessened their commitment, I think the city manager just disclosed what the city's commitment was and what the council will be discussing as part of this project. And I think it's important to the community.
Well, again, and it's, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it is just one of those things where maybe what your perspective is as to what the commitment was that was made to us originally, and what our understanding of that commitment is, is two separate things.
And I think that's why it's good that we have the meeting, that this be scheduled, because right now, this is a budget meeting, and I understand why you're here, but I think that we need to focus on the project and that subject solely, in order to answer the questions that you have.
Okay, well, the main goal of our comments today is that we want to be part of this budget. We don't think that it's asking too much after the last year-plus of fundraising and everybody being well aware that this project has been on the table and is on a back burner to ask for funding and to have it documented and committed to by the private council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Peggy Lewis?
Can you let Sharon talk to you?
Okay. Sharon, yeah, do you have a speaker?
Did you have a speaker sheet or no?
It's up there.
It is.
It just doesn't match the speaker. I gave it to.
There it is, Sharon.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Scott City Council Mayor. I don't have too many more items to add to Patrick's information, but as I was going through, and this is just part of it, the capital improvement plan for the next five years, I was really disappointed to see that the Fall of Heroes Memorial Project wasn't even mentioned on it. And I think part of the problem is the disconnect between CHAMP going forward with this without a true commitment from the city. This should be, I think, overseen either by the Parks and Recreation, and it should be made a part, and that way, the Fall of Heroes Memorial Project doesn't get overlooked in the future. You know, it will be before the council for improvements, for any type of changes that need to be made, ongoing maintenance, the upkeep plans for it and all that. And I'm asking you to either, as part of your budget, increase the Parks and Recreation Fund and earmark this portion of this money for, you know, earmark the increased budget line for the city project, the Fall of Heroes Memorial Project, and we think that's why it is important, the budget meeting today. It can be done in the revision for the 2014 to 16 budget and/or the CIP for the 2014 to 19 year. We're asking the timeline to be introduced to the next city council meeting on July 17th, regardless of where the requests of the biz have gone or what has been received. We need an account of what's going on. The individual meetings are going nowhere. Officer Ton died on January 25th, 2013. We are a year and a half behind him. He deserves better. And also, I suggest appointing a person from the Easitation Committee, Planning Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission to work with a representative from CHAMP, or CHAMP as a whole, to move this project along in a timely manner and have it dedicated on the second anniversary of his death, and perhaps completion by police week in May It's adding one more project to the 70 projects that are already on the CIP, and I understand that that's a tremendous amount of hours, but I think what we've seen in the budget is that you have a great outlook for the future of golf. But unfortunately, Officer Ton's death was not planned for, and there are many still mourning and wanting to memorialize that man in this community, and I ask you to do so in a timely manner. Thank you.
I want to add something here. Sharon and Patrick, I really want to apologize to you. I thought that we were moving along with this when we had our first meeting and we were discussing phases. I thought we were working on the phases with you when we had that, we said it takes this and it takes that, it takes this. There was a disconnect, and personally, I want to apologize, and I'm going to make sure that something happens soon regarding this project. Anyone else?
Well, that's why I asked if council would agree that we could at least commit to matching the fundraising efforts that would not exceed $50,000, but at least, at least commit to that, and that would also include design work.
And we'll discuss that when we're into the budget.
Just want to make sure we have it there. Thank you.
Peggy Lewis?
Hi, I'm Peggy Lewis. I'm not a member of CHAMP, I'm a citizen, and I'm ashamed of our town. This officer died protecting my family, all of our families. I never knew him, but I have gone to every single fundraiser that these people have held. And I can honestly say, I've only ever seen two of you at any of them. And that really hurts me, that he protected this town, and no one can take the time to give him the honor he deserves. And these people are working so hard. I've gone to every single one of their fundraisers. I have dug in my pockets deep many, many times. There's only so many people in this town. We can't come up with this money on our own. Even if every single person put in a certain percentage, there's not enough people here. We need your help. And it saddens me, I have four sons, I moved to this community in 1989, I am a homeowner here, I pay taxes. It saddens me that if one of my sons grew up to be a police officer in this town, you wouldn't have honored him if he died in the line of duty. Please stop just putting them on the back burner. These people are working themselves sick and they need help. And as a citizen, I really am begging you to help them. Thank you.
Comments?
No. You know, I think, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I am shocked and surprised at what I'm hearing. I would say to you, I do not recall many times that you have come to the council to speak about what's going on. I don't know who is on your committee necessarily, but I don't feel that the city has not been supportive, I don't think we've been made aware of the situation or what you expect of us.
Send a city council member in attendance to the meeting for the city manager, Mr. James, yes. Is that a communication issue within the council?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what the committee's about, but I just know that if there's, if you have feelings and if there's something that you want or need, you have to come and make us aware of it. And I don't know, I'm looking at you, Patrick, maybe you think that I shouldn't care of it, but unless there's some conversation, I don't know how I would know about it.
We've been in the agenda item one time.
You can come and speak at any meeting.
Right, I understand that, but we've been in the agenda item, excuse me, we've been in the agenda item to one single time.
Mr. Flack, if you want to speak, I need you to come up, we can't get you on the record.
I don't want to drag this out, you're really emotional about this. You're expressing either disappointment or some concern that we haven't been vocal on this issue.
I'm not, I'm just making an observation.
Okay, and, you know, my observation in kind is that we have made multiple efforts to keep the channels open and communicate. It may not have been from Ms. Tonian directly to the council all the time, because we've worked with Mr. Burn, we've, you know, dealt with Mr. Winkler, we've dealt with a couple of members on the council who have come to our meetings, who have come to our events. When you say to us that, you know, I'm not really aware of, you know, who's on your committee and what the purpose of the committee is and all that kind of stuff, and I don't, I'm not trying to be disrespectful or rude, but like I said, this project wasn't hatched yesterday, and you've been on the council, both as mayor and as a council member, for years, and have always had your control and knowledge of what's going on with all these committees within the city. I will tell you guys flat out, and this isn't directed to you, this is directed to the entire council, the perception that we're getting and the feedback that we're getting, and which came as a shock to me, I've only been here four and a half years in this community, but people are saying things to me that the reason you guys are on the back burner is because if this isn't a member's, a council member's pet project, you're not going to get the attention that you should be getting, or the attention that you deserve. I hope that you guys can prove that comment to be untrue, but I will tell you that we've been on the agenda one time here, you know, this is not a fresh project, this is something that you guys should be asking for updates on through staff periodically, or asking us, or, you know, inviting us, if that's even necessitated, to come and give you guys an update, let you know what's our fundraising progress been doing, what are our events about. I mean, people within the community are well aware of it. We're at the football games, walking up and down the bleachers with our hats in hand, asking for contributions. We're selling t-shirts, we're going outside of this community, we're soliciting sponsors from all over the county to come in and help us do these projects from outside of town. So, it is something that, you know, like I said, you know, I really think that there shouldn't be any lack of awareness on anybody's part up here on the dais today, and hopefully after I leave here today, there won't be any lack of awareness any longer, that you guys are now well aware, this is a project that the community is supporting, not just with their dollars, but with their hours. You've heard, I heard you guys talk about your budget, about now you're introducing the value of the cast volunteers, what their dollar value is and stuff. That is information that should be known to you. But we're a nonprofit, we're not keeping track of that stuff. But believe me, there isn't a person that's on this committee, they haven't committed to three or 400 individual hours, and collectively, if you want to do the math on that, and there's 20 people on the committee, not counting the volunteers that we get to pray out for our events, that's a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of heart that's been put into this project. All for one person, and all for the future officers in the event something falls thin. And this is a project, as I could say, it wasn't just hatched yesterday, I don't want to keep repeating myself, and you guys know that can happen until I get up here and get approved of, but anyway.
Well, I'm not trying to get into a debate over this meeting, I'm just saying that I would invite you either to come to the meeting and update us, or email, or however you would like to do that. Yes, I see all the projects you're involved in, that all seem to be going well, but unless we hear the frustration that I heard today, it kind of looks like everything is going okay.
Well, the frustration's been mounting, basically because.
And we don't want that either.
No, right, and none of us want it, but it's because we understood, and we still continue to understand, that to go through the process, and there is a process with bureaucracy that we have to deal with to get through this project, we understand that and stuff. We just don't feel that we've gotten the priority or the attention that we should be able to expedite a process, especially when we see, you know, Officer Ton being memorialized down at the Capitol, down in Southern California, out in DC. Why isn't this happening here at a quicker rate? If nothing else, that alone should be a motivation for the council to take a greater interest in making this happen, and to working with staff to guarantee us that this is going to happen.
Well, I can guarantee after today, we'll have a better line of communication on the status of CHAMP.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. I thank you guys and all of you. Thank you.
Mark, you wanted to say something?
I did. I wanted to thank you, Patrick, but I do want to admonish you on something else. I don't know where the communication breakdown has come from, but the last meeting that I was at, and so was Councilmember Singleton, the city manager, Mr. Winkler, and two members of the CHAMP program, we got a lot of progress done. I don't know if you guys were informed of any of that information.
Mark, were you present at that meeting?
No, it was just that group.
You're not talking about the meeting, the original inception where we mentioned the dog park?
Well, I was at that meeting as well. I mean, I don't think I've missed more than one, and that was because I was out of town, but.
Patrick, you have to come back up, you're going to talk.
I'm here for a couple.
And I'm sorry, but that's.
The point I was trying to make is, a lot of things have taken place, and I don't know if this has been communicated to you or not. The idea of matching funds, I know where that came from. Both Councilmember Singleton and I both felt very strongly about that at the meeting we were at, that the city needs to step up to the plate. I think communication might need to be improved, if you guys are not getting that information.
You know, and like you said, Councilmember Cruz, the communication's open now, and there was a disconnect maybe on both parts. So, let's just get together, work on it, and not blame each other.
Well, I'm not going for a blame issue.
No, I wasn't either, I'm just saying, we could be doing this all day, about he-said, she-said, who was there, who wasn't there. We know that now is the time to go forward, and we are all in the same place right now with going forward with this. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I feel very strongly about this project. I was one of the people who pushed it away from being a dog park and being a memorial because he was more than just a K-9 officer. Look at this young man. He was in the military, he was a firefighter, he was a police officer. K-9 is such a small portion of who and what he was. We needed something out there that memorialized him more than just a dog park. With that said, we need to reemphasize the fact that the city is part of this, and we are going to increase our communication with both the CHAMPs and with the individuals who show up for the committee.
And Councilmember Cruz, in the same vein, we're all aware of Kevin's multifaceted mind, and we have made a real concerted effort, especially this past weekend at the golf tournament that we put on, that was a great success, to do something that moved us away from the mourning aspect of the lost Kevin, and looking at things that he enjoyed, golfing, you know, different events that are trying to lighten this love and this burden that the community not only feels, the department feels, and the Tons feel. The Tons deserve some closure here, too. This memorial, this current year, they've been called upon so many times to come to a memorial service. They have been dedicated to the memory of their son, and have traveled up and down the state and across this country, and every event that we have put on, they show up here, and they're a big part of this thing. They deserve to get some closure from the community here and something that definitively honors their son in perpetuity forever.
I agree.
I just want to add one more thing, Patrick, don't go away, and then I'm going to close it. But in memorializing Officer Ton, the city, we may have not monetarily done it, but there's been someone from the city, all the way back to Washington DC, to every memorialization, we have all talked to the Tons, we have all been in contact with the Tons whenever we could. We've had a year, you know, celebration or remembrance of, so it's, the city has been doing something.
Right. And I'm not discounting these personal communications with the city. And I, and I know that all this has gone on and our committee's well aware.
I'm just making it aware that everybody else is aware.
Oh, yeah. The community should be aware of it too. And, you know, I'm not discounting that the city has made contributions and helped us out. The Eways event, you guys made a great contribution and really pushed our goal forward at, at that event. And so don't think that we, we don't appreciate what has been done, but we just feel it more can be.
Okay. Moving on.
I just want to say, make a comment, please. You go ahead and sit down. I just want to say, you know, ever since I brought this forward, when I worked the perimeter, the morning, afternoon, but it was morning when I worked the perimeter, along with Jim Vesuzi, who's in the back here, I brought this idea forward. And I said in the beginning that I would make sure this is not being put on a back burner, it's forgotten. I will not let him be forgotten. Now, I'm sorry that, you know, Champ feels like we've put this on the back burner, but I thought we made a lot of progress in our last meeting here. And I was happy with that. And I was going to continue, like I'm doing tonight, to ask the commitment of the city. I understand the commitment. That's all we need. Just a little hope and commitment. And we'll deal with that later. But we, the city hasn't forgotten. I won't let them do that as long as I'm up here. Okay? Thank you.
Well, just to say that all of us were working on going from the dog park to the other thing. It was, you know, this was this whole council. It wasn't just, we're just all, maybe a loss of disconnect, but it isn't like we weren't all working on it at one time. Okay. Mr. Gordon?
That's on the next.
Oh, okay.
That's on the next item, John.
Never mind. Sit down. Okay, so, I don't know where we are. Anyone want to help me out here? Oh, public, okay. So now we're going to go to committee funding, correct?
Let me just ask Aina's a question because I know she has a consultant that might have a time commitment with the flights. So are you okay with moving forward on the next item on here? Or do you want to move the user fee study ahead?
If that would be okay with the mayor and council members?
Before we go on.
Are we done with the budget?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to ask.
Okay, is this a presentation or, I'm sorry, what's the user?
Oh, my staff report is a staff report.
Oh, okay.
So we brought in a consultant from out of the area.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Mayor, do you want to hold off on council questions and comments on the budget until the end of the meeting? Is that the?
Well, that was my thought. Are you guys?
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you.
Well, we're just going to keep going here and there and everywhere. Let's.
So user fee.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do the user fee study right now?
And do you have a PowerPoint for this?
Consultant just stepped down, but let me go ahead and get started.
Do you have a PowerPoint for this item?
We do. And that's actually for the consultant, so I can go ahead and get started this afternoon. So good evening, mayor, council members, and community members. So this evening, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution approving the user regulatory fees for public services. By way of background, one of the goals that council, that we all agreed to during the strategic planning process was to improve financial stability. And an objective of that goal was really to develop a process to identify different programs and services that benefit either individual users or the community at large. Additionally, council asked that each department solicit fee schedules from other cities and see if we could identify any types of revenue opportunities that the city of Galt may be missing out on. And they also, council also asked that we see about a user fee study. So back in 2012, the city developed a request for proposals for financial services for a comprehensive fee study. And the firm of MGT was actually selected or selected to assist us in this endeavor. And some of the tasks that MGT was assigned with was calculating the cost of providing support services, recommending fee adjustments based on best practices, identifying unique fees to the city of Galt, identifying factors which could limit our full cost recovery, recommending potential new fees for services, suggesting technical and or procedure innovations that have been used successfully in other communities. So there's a list of other items. They also were tasked with developing revenue projections based on recommended fee adjustments. And they also were tasked with coming up with some comparative information, including some from our neighboring cities, primarily Elgro, Dixon, and Lodi. And afterwards will be given a model so that we can hopefully provide this as an updated analysis every year. So attached to the report, or to the staff report is the user fee study findings. And an executive summary is provided. And I do want to cover just a little bit about some of the executive information, summary information. It does provide a cost of the different services that are provided. And in the report itself, you'll see that the cost of some of our services are just about $2 million. Our current cost recovery for those services is at 45%. So basically, other fees or services or taxes are subsidizing the current service level at about 55%. We have made some recommendations at the staff level that the consultant has agreed with that would bring the recovery level up from 45% to 54%, and there is the potential of an increase in revenue of just about $170,000. We are also recommending that the adjustment fee increase on an annual basis based on CPI. And I did want to provide a brief overview at the department level. I do have the consultant here as well and she'll go over just a little bit more about her process and what the methodology is for MGT. But let me go through just some of the significant adjustments that are being presented this evening. So for the city clerk, one of the fees that is being recommended is notary, a notary fee is consistent with what other agencies charge currently. It is, if there is not a service charge for that service that is provided by the clerk's office, then there is a recommended, a recommended fee of $10. And the community development department for building, the recommendation is that the building valuation index that will be used for permit valuation be the most recent index available. Under the community development planning, there are two fees that are recommended, basically looking at the flat fees to the actual cost, either that incurred by the consultant and or staff. We are also recommending that the conditional use permit categories be delayed until the zoning matrix is updated. So we are recommending delayed implementation. On the public works engineering, one of the recommended changes is to consolidate the plan check and inspection categories into one single category. In finance, the delinquent business license penalty is recommended to be changed from, changed to a flat rate of $27 as opposed to a percentage per month. Under parks and recreation, there is, let's see, there's currently a subsidy of approximately 60%. And depending on the different programs, there are different percentages of increases in revenues that are, or to the service fees that are being recommended. And some of the fees you'll actually see that it may be more than the cost of service, but one of the guidelines is that you have to charge, your charge cannot exceed the cost of service. But there are some exemptions to that. And one of them is the rental for governmental facilities, which the parks and recreation facilities do fall under. So basically, the recommendation is closer to what market value would be or what the market would bear. So you will see that in the, in the report itself. Under the police, the excessive false alarm fee is presented. But we're actually recommending that we delay that implementation until we come back in and evaluate the alarm permit fees, which was not part of the study, and then we'll come back with an ordinance on, on that specific fee. We did provide this information to the Parks and Recreation Commission just yesterday, yesterday. And I believe that the commission was supportive of all of the staff recommendations with the exception of, under the fee schedule for the recreation, there is an item number eight and it references the light. The current fee is $15. Recommended fee was to increase that to 20, and I believe their recommendation was to not increase it to the $20 and just continue to maintain or charge the current fee. I believe that that was, unless you want to provide any other feedback on that meeting.
Yes, that is correct. That line item is for the $10 per player fee that our youth organization groups that reside here in Galt. And this had come to the council, I believe, two years ago. And we had agreed on $10 per player per year, and in that they would be able to use the light at $15 per hour. We are recommending that the fee be moved to $20 per hour for those light usage. And the Parks and Recreation Commission is recommending that you keep it at $15.
What's the actual cost, or do you know?
The actual cost, depending on which facility that you're using, anywhere from 55, 45, 35, depending on which facility you'd be using.
So it's already subsidized pretty heavily.
Yeah. Thank you. So the fiscal impact of the staff's recommendation, I do want to have some of their handouts for council this evening, was that the fiscal impact would be if council did agree with the staff recommendation, that there would be approximately $170,000 additional revenue. Again, some of the items that are presented this evening, some of the services we haven't provided in years, they are estimates. I mean, our building activity has now, we actually have, are issuing building permits. But when the study actually started about a year ago, we didn't really have any historical information in the most recent year. So a lot of this is estimates. So we are recommending that we not make any adjustments to the budget this evening and kind of wait to see how the volume actually, what type of volume we will actually be incurring over the next year. Some of the recommendations are that, that we implement the effective date for some of the fees herein would be as of July 1st, with a couple of exceptions. Those that are based on development, that we would postpone implementation until September 1st. And there are also some fees that, the services are currently being provided, like some of the swimming fees and stuff like that. We not change that right now. We're in the middle of that season right now. Or we may have an existing contract in place for various recreational programs. So we want to delay implementation for those fees until January 1st. And we did provide some asterisks in the master fee schedule. So with that, I do want to introduce our consultant as well. So Erin Payton, if you can please come up. And Erin Payton is with MGT and they are the consultants that are helping us. They have some, well, I guess more experience than I do on the user fee study. And then if you can maybe go over your presentation, then we can, if there's any questions that council may have this evening. And I do have a revised resolution and master fee schedule as well that I will pass out after your presentation.
Thanks, Aina. Good afternoon. I want to start out by apologizing, hopefully unnecessarily. I come to you with a really bad chest cold and I have dosed myself with a number of different things. Hopefully I won't be wheezing and sniffling, but if I do, bear with me, please. Right out of the gate. I put together, I think, about a 10 to 15 minute presentation for you. I want to just kind of go through a couple of different ideas and then, and then show you a little bit of the results that Aina's just talked about. I want to talk briefly about why cities, cities in general undertake user fee studies. I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about what we did for the city of Galt, walk you through a little bit of the math to show you how we made the calculations that we did, and then spend a few minutes talking about some issues that are related. I mean, we, my firm does the cost analysis, but there are other impacts to consider when you are trying to determine what, what, where you want to set your fees. There are considerations other than, than simply costs that you need to, to take into consideration when you're, when you're establishing fees and cost recovery policies. And then finally, I've got a, the last slide will show you on a very high level the study findings and revenue impact. So why do cities undertake fee studies? I put this, I put this slide together actually for another brand new user fee client down in Southern California. They hadn't had a user fee study done in at least two decades, maybe more. I think the city of Galt may be in similar circumstances. It's been quite some time since the city of Galt has had a user fee analysis prepared. So I just wanted to give you sort of a high level list of reasons of why city might undertake a user fee study. First and foremost is just simply knowledge. Most agencies appreciate an understanding of the true cost of providing fee for service activities. I'll get into true cost a few slides from now, but essentially there are a number of different cost components that many agencies don't take into consideration, but are real costs of providing fee for service activities. We want to make sure that, that every agency is complying with state law governing user fee cost recovery. There are certain propositions that define fees versus taxes and provide for limits on, on, on costs and give a definition of what a user fee, user fee service is. So we want to make sure that any agency that has user fees in place comply with state law. Some agencies undergo fee studies in response to a legal challenge. It's certainly not the case here in the city of Galt. Most agencies are interested, they're, they're, you know, as general tax dollars are being squeezed further and further. If there is a way to increase general fund revenues, this is one of the, one of the ways that we can do that. And then finally, the last two, excuse me, the last two items on the list are sort of linked. It's just simply a good idea that a user fee study gives you very good management information and it allows the city to make decisions about how to allocate a limited amount of resources. And it also allows for fiscal responsibility. Okay, what did we do for the city of Galt? A user fee study can be, you know, broken down almost into two, into two discrete phases. The first phase would sort of encompass the first three items on this list. The second phase, the last three items. The first phase of the study is simply the cost analysis. That's the green eye shade accounting portion of the study, where we are trying to define cost. So the first thing we do is we develop an inventory of user fees and charges that are going to be included in the study, which activities lend themselves to fee for service activities. Not everything that a city, that a department does is user fee related. General public safety services obviously are not fee related. General park maintenance services are not fee related. Then within the community development department, they have advanced planning activities or code enforcement, that's not a service, those are not user fee related typically. So the next thing we do, once we have defined our world, is we actually perform the cost analysis. We, we find out what is truly involved in providing those services and the amount of time spent. And we, and we are able to calculate the cost of that time and apply costs. Once we have done the cost analysis, then it becomes a very easy exercise to compare the cost of providing a service with a fee that's currently being charged and identify resulting subsidy levels. Once the math is done, the second phase of the study begins, and that is more of the policy phase of the study. We need to develop a policy of cost recovery. Aina's director was mentioning that. We need to decide if, if we are going to eliminate those subsidies in whole or in part or, or do nothing with any, with any fees. So working with the department staff in conjunction with city management and the finance department and consultant chiming in on what we've, what we've seen in other cities, how other cities have dealt with these different subsidies, we have put together a package of proposed fee adjustments for your consideration today. We've also, given those proposed fee adjustments, we have been able to project revenue impact as a result of implementation of these fees. And then finally, again, as Finance Director said, we also. And then finally, again, as Finance Director said, we also incorporated comparison survey to see what some of your neighboring cities are charging for for like fees. Okay, the methodology. There is actually a method behind our madness. A cost analysis is essentially comprised of two basic elements. The cost of staff providing service, when we talk about user fee services, we're really talking about labor-based activities. So the cost of staff who are providing the service and the time spent to provide that service. So the product of that hourly rate, that staff cost multiplied by the time spent yields the cost of providing the service. Excuse me, I am sorry. Okay, now I'm really sorry because these next two slides are going to show you probably more detail than you really wanted to, but I think it's important that you understand how we develop the cost. Again, we start with a fully, what we call a fully burdened hourly rate. We take a look at the staff in any one department and we've got the planning division staff right here now. And we start out with annual salary and benefit components of those staff members. And the first thing we do is we calculate hourly salaries and benefits. We simply divide that annual cost by two thousand and eighty work hours in a year. Forty hours a week times fifty-two weeks a year. The next thing we do is we layer on burden factors. One of those burden factors is what we call compensated absences or paid time off. There's kind of a standard average of vacation holiday and sick leave. That component of cost is reduced from that, from that potentially billable, number of available billable hours. So we bump up the hourly rates by that amount. And the next layer of burden that we add on is what we call general administration. That's department administration, support, dealing with budget issues, personnel issues, it's training and education activity and so on. We layer that additional burden factor on. We layer on a proportionate amount of each department's operating expenses, its services and supply costs, office supplies, its data processing costs, training. And then finally, we layer on a component that we call citywide overhead and that's coming from the cost allocation plan that I think Inez will be speaking with you about a little bit later. And that's the support cost that each one of these operating departments receives from finance, from the city manager, from council or yourself, from building maintenance and so on. So you can see that for the three positions that are budgeted in the planning division, the community development director, the senior planner and the admin assistant, when you start out with the, I've sort of stripped down hourly salary and benefit rates of sixty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, fifty-four thirty-four, twenty-four oh six. By the time you're done with all of these burden factors that are layered on, you've got billable rates of one hundred and forty-five sixty-two, one hundred and fifteen thirty-four and fifty-one oh six. Those burden rates then get applied to the time spent to provide the service and hopefully everybody can see this. So the bulk of the study, the bulk of the cost analysis study was on this particular activity right here, which is to define what it takes to provide a service from start to finish. So we've got an example service here in the planning department. It's a site plan review for new construction. And we've got eleven different tasks involved in providing that service from start to finish. And then you can see in the bulk of that spreadsheet, the time elements that are assigned by position, by task. The senior planner has the lion's share of the processing time involved in this particular activity, which you see we've added up the minutes down at the bottom, translated those into hours per unit or per application in this particular example, and then multiplied that time by the fully burdened hourly rates to come up with the total cost to provide the service. This total cost in this case was five thousand nine eighty-three oh three. Once we were done with the cost analysis, then again, that policy activity comes into place. What do we want to do with this fee? Do we want to charge a hundred percent cost recovery? Do we want it set at a fifty? Do we not want to change it, whatever it may be? And then you can see in this particular instance, we are proposing a hundred percent cost recovery rate for site plan review new construction. Okay. So now what's the, what's the cost analysis, that once the accounting exercise is done, again, the policy, the policy phase comes into place. What do we want to do with this information? Where do we want to set our fees? There are a number of reasons why you would want to set fees at lower than full cost and a number of reasons why you would want to set fees at full cost or strive towards for full cost recovery. So one way to start thinking about this exercise is to start with a basic definition of what a user fee is. A user fee service is one where the applicant is receiving a specific benefit that does not accrue to non-applicants. The underlying philosophy behind that is that if you are receiving a specific benefit for a service from what you will benefit, particularly monetarily, then you should pay the full cost of that service unless otherwise decided. So what are some of the concepts that we want to take into consideration when we're thinking about cost recovery policy? The first two are kind of related. The first one that I list there is a community, is there a community-wide benefit versus a specific benefit? There may be certain programs, a teen after-school program or a midnight basketball program, for example, that is obviously specifically benefiting the participant in that program, but it has a larger benefit to the community as a whole. The concept of service recipient versus service driver. There may be somebody who is driving the use of a service, such as a code enforcement program, where the fee obviously then should be applied against the person who is driving the service, but there may be, again, a greater unintended recipient of that service. So again, using code enforcement as an example, if you have somebody who has not built their home code or has weeds in their yard that need to be evaded, getting that homeowner in compliance with code has a larger benefit beyond just to that particular property. It has a benefit to that person's neighborhood and the community as a whole. Affordability of services. Most cities are aware and sensitive to the fact that there are some, there are some programs and services that they need to make, maintain affordable for certain components of the community. Senior service programs is one obvious example of that. Appeal fees, appeals to city council, appeals to planning commission fees. These are commonly heavily subsidized services because we want to make that process available to everybody and not price it out of the realm of possibility for anyone. The lack of demand, this is a very economic heavy theory, but the idea is that there are some services and programs that are more inelastic than others and that cannot handle price adjustments without losing, you know, a decrease in demand for those services. There are other services that are more, far more elastic and you can adjust fees and still expect to maintain your level of demand for those services. Adult sports programs typically tend to be fairly elastic in that, in that the user of those services will pay the fees. Classes less so. The ability to pay is a little, is a little more tenuous and so we tend to typically have some sort of subsidy level for those. One of the reasons why cities would want to establish a higher cost recovery policy or full cost recovery policy is if you have a monopoly in providing certain services. Development-related permits and applications are clearly one of those areas where you have a monopoly for providing services. If somebody wants to build within the city of Galt, they have to adhere to all of the regulations and processes and regulatory processes and procedures established in Galt. And so they should be able, they should be required to pay for those services. There may be competition for services and this can actually work either towards a high level of cost recovery or actually, you know, further away, depending on what the, what the actual service is. Facility and room rentals. And it's mentioned that those, these are particular services that don't need to be tied to the cost of providing a service. They can be established based on market, market rates. And again, if you have surrounding cities or private agencies who are charging fees that are higher than yours, you can then adjust your fees if that is the council's design. You can adjust those fees upwards to match those market rates regardless of what your costs actually may be. There may be statute to legislation governing recoveries. There are certain health and safety codes or public safety codes that limit certain fees. The California Public Records Act is a very good example of limitations on particular cost items that you cannot include in certain copies of public records. So we need to be aware of that and make sure that the cost elements do not include those things. Other than finally, there may be some difficulty in collecting certain fees. False alarm responses. It's usually fees that are collected after the service has been provided where there is potentially a difficulty in collecting these fees. So the false alarm response is one good example of that. Did you have a question? Can you look what you wanted there? Okay. The last slide that I have here, and again, I'm sorry, the print is kind of small, is a high-level review, a high-level summary of the analysis. And behind each one of these, so each department that we looked at, it's listed in the left-hand column there, behind each one of these rows, there is a list of fees and it could be a small list of maybe a dozen up to a large list of maybe eighty fees that comprise all of the different activities that we looked at within each one of those departments. And then behind, and I think that list of fees is in our report of findings as well as in the master fee schedule. So you can actually see individually, one by one, what they are at, where they are at. And then also behind that, that report of findings and the master fee schedule is a whole slew of calculations that we use to develop each individual fee cost model. So for the user fee departments that we looked at, the costs of the user fees are listed in column A and it goes from relatively small two thousand dollars up to relatively large one million five oh nine for Parks and Recreation. Just under two million dollars of user fee costs in total. Current revenues that the city is collecting are listed in column B. And the percentages that are to the right of the numbers, I think, are what is typically of interest to most city councils. And you can see that the cost recovery levels run from twenty-two percent cost recovery all the way up to a high of seventy-two percent for the planning department. The reverse then is shown in column C. This is the current subsidy. This is what the general fund and the culture and recreation fund are paying for these services that the beneficiary of the service, the purchaser of the service is not paying. So we've got a high cost recovery level of seventy percent down to a low of twenty-eight percent. Overall, as Inez mentioned, we've got a fifty-five percent subsidy level that's happening right now in the city of Galt. Columns D and E have to do with this policy activity that I've talked about. We worked, MGT worked closely with the departments at the conclusion of the cost analysis to determine what was reasonable, knowing their clientele and us knowing what we have seen in other agencies. We have presented cost adjustments to many, many of the fees that are involved in the study and the resulting cost recovery is shown in column D there. And so we are projecting to go from eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand in user fee revenue up to a potential one thousand fifty, one million fifty-six thousand in user fee revenue, assuming no significant changes in demand. And that translates into increased revenue in that last column there of just under one hundred and seventy thousand.
Can I interject here for a second?
Actually, I am all done.
Okay, well, you didn't give us a handout of that, correct? It's not in here? Because I'm trying to find it and I don't see.
No, that's, no, that chart specifically is page three of the user fee study.
Of this whole?
This presentation, I don't know if I heard it.
No, it was not. She was just kind of presenting something. Okay, I would really like to ask in the future with any kind of overheads that we have that were given something for, because instead of trying to look through here and find the answers, and we'll see something about four or five pages back and want to ask questions about it. I know I'm getting old, but I don't think, you know, I don't think it's my fault that I can't remember something ten pages back. So I would ask that in the future, when we're given any kind of things like this, especially when it has to do with budget review, that we get the overheads for them so we can kind of go along with it. Not to you, you know, because you lost me there quite a few times.
Oh, no.
Okay. Any questions from council?
You indicated that the chart for services was determined based on your conversations with individual departments and what is, I guess, commonly practiced in other jurisdictions. And I understand, you know, defining what is individual benefit and what is partial or community benefit. But I did have a couple of questions on a couple of them, like under Public Works. Under improvement plan review, I would think that would be more of an individual benefit rather than a partial community benefit? That's just a question. Steve?
Page number, please.
I'm sorry, there is no, there is no page number. It's at the back of the, actually, it's the last page of what we have, the last page of what we have.
Thank you.
And I do have that in front of me, so, and I don't, polished, I didn't memorize the reporting.
There were, actually, there were two. It was improvement plan review and then also inspection services. So I'm, and I don't know whether the inspection services were for a project or a, inspection services is very broad, obviously, and I don't know what that was intended to be covering.
All right. And I'm still trying to catch up with you here. Do you have a page number you're looking at?
No, there is no page number, but it looks like this.
Oh, okay.
Well, I don't have, I can't remember pages. I apologize.
That's the master fee schedule. No, no. What council member, council is looking at is back in two thousand and one, we actually did a staff report and presented with department input, a community versus individual benefit. So I think that's what you're talking, okay.
Yeah, it was an attachment.
Yeah, it was an attachment. This was something that was done back in two thousand and eleven and this was presented more as a guide to advise council that we were still continuing with that original goal.
So this doesn't represent how the fees were calculated?
No, not necessarily. This was basically, in two thousand and eleven, council said improved financial stability and the very first step was for us to go back in and say, was this a community benefit? Was this an individual benefit? And so that was the very first exercise. And then after that, then it was to contact other agencies for fee schedules. And then lastly, was to hire a consultant and come up with a user fee study. So that was the very first step of the entire process. But I wanted to bring it all together and kind of close it up with this last chapter of that goal.
I did have a couple of other questions on specific fees, simply because I don't know what they mean. One of them, it's under police and it's social host loud party fee. What is that?
That is when we respond to a party, usually teenagers.
So you charge seventy-five, you charge them seventy-five dollars?
Yes.
Or eighty-five dollars, whatever it is. So is that on first response, second response, or how's that implemented? I'm just curious.
That's on the first response.
Really?
Yes, and it has to do basically with teenagers throwing a party inside their parents' home.
Well, what about if it's the parents throwing the party and they're being loud?
It's basically the same thing.
Okay. And then it says DUI emergency response.
By state law, in fact, you're involved in a traffic accident and between the police, fire and ambulance respond, we can actually charge them for our response for the total time that we're there.
Okay. If it's a DUI, excuse me.
DUI.
Counsel, any more questions?
Well, yes, I did have a couple more, if that's okay. On the swim teams, it says recreational swim teams, and it says current fee is $110 and recommended is $110. Is that per individual or per team, or how is that done?
That is per team, and that fee was brought, I'm sorry, per swimmer. And that fee was brought to you a couple of months ago before the swim season started.
Okay. And then the last one I had, I see under planning, they want to go, like on the SEQA documents, go with a cost plus percentage. And I've seen that before. Is that a very common practice now, or, because it's the estimated and reasonable cost of providing whatever that service is, like you said?
You know, for SEQA?
Yes.
For as many, as many different ways as you can conceive of charging those fees, that, there is no, you know, standard, whether it's, you know, consultant cost plus a percentage that's attached to that consultant cost to recover city staff costs or administrative costs or actual time spent, because it's a really, they're not.
They vary greatly.
Very, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I was just curious, because I hadn't seen one express this percentage, and I'm guessing other jurisdictions, a 20% is a reasonable percentage, I think?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have.
Move the microphone just back a little bit, because we're getting something.
Okay.
Counsel, anyone else with a question regarding the user fees?
One, we talked earlier about how Parks and Rec did not recommend increasing the cost of the lighting. Is that illustrated in this report someplace?
No. No, it is not. It was taken to the commission last night, and we're giving you their verbal of their recommendation.
There is discussion of it in this report, but for that one particular facility where we did recommend a $5 increase in the fee, the commission then is saying, well, we would prefer not to change that. So the report does show that facility lighting fee is 15 and a recommendation of 20.
Because I guess I'm looking for the percentage of how much we were subsidizing that lighting fee. Right now, the recommended, or the current fee is $15 an hour. We are currently recovering 25% of the cost. The cost is actually evaluated at $60, and so the, if we maintained it at the $15 and that subsidy would remain, but the recommendation was at $20 an hour. So that means that's certainly something that council could either go ahead and accept the Recreation Commission's recommendation and leave it at the current fee schedule, or you could accept what's presented here, or something else, I guess. So I would like to pass out the master fee schedule. One of the oversights that I had was, the study itself had a bunch of footnotes, and I think as the customer, when you come up and you want to pay a fee, you're not going to be looking at the study. I think it's important for us to have a standalone document. And so we have redlined the fee schedule to incorporate the footnote, so that way the customer comes to the counter, they have all the information, they don't have to go back to the fee study. So I do want to present this to council members. It is a redline version. It just has these footnotes incorporated with it, and with that, I've also updated the resolution. It does not include that recommendation, but in review of the staff report this morning when I was preparing for this afternoon, I realized that if the customer came up to the counter, then staff members would be responsible to pull the study out and reference something. I just don't think that was efficient.
That takes a while.
So we wanted to have a more comprehensible one, so I apologize for distributing it today, but I just felt that was a better schedule.
So Armando, did Parks and Rec give some backup to why they wanted to keep it the old rate?
Ben Gámez was there representing Calhoun FC, and his concern was that they have several participants that are under the poverty level, and this may be a burden to them by having to pay the additional $5 per hour for lights. This is an issue that was recently brought, I think, within the last two years to the council and commission, and they felt $15 was enough to charge to help these kids play sports.
Okay. Can I take you back on your question? Was Parks and Rec, did you make Parks and Rec aware that we're paying 75% and?
I did make them aware that the majority of our programs are in the 80, 85, 86% of recovery rate, and this was at 25%. And they were aware of that when they made that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
If I could make just a comment on that, too. We had a lot of discussion about this several years ago. I think one of the points that staff made back when we first made it, one is there's a heavy subsidy, two is that this is an optional thing. This isn't just your basic, you know, soccer or baseball. They have a choice of whether they play at night, whether they play during the day. And so we looked at this, the recovery level on this one should actually be higher than the other ones, and this one's actually a lot lower. And so we're trying, we don't want, you know, it should, again, it probably should be up to 35 or 40 or more, but we're not comfortable recommending a significant bump. So the goal is right now just to get it up a little bit. And the 15 to 20, that doesn't, you know, it's not like an individual kid has to pay that as part of their dues. That's the organization that chooses when they practice and how they assess that. So if they want to have some kind of a subsidy program that says, okay, if you're, you know, if you're below a certain poverty level, that you have different fee levels, they can certainly choose to do that among their programs. We don't, we don't charge the fees for those programs. They set the rates of how much they charge for their membership, and they can certainly subsidize that through fundraising or some of the other things that they do. Just to remind the council some of this discussion.
Well, yeah, and if you divide it between how many kids are out there doing it, and, you know, I understand it's a touchy subject, because if there's 20 kids out there, $15 an hour, and we're paying the other 75%.
But it's all by choice, too. You don't have to play at night.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Personally, I think they ought to pay whatever the rate is for if the other teams play.
I'm with you.
It doesn't make sense to me not to. Particularly given the condition of the '06 fund. The general fund is having to subsidize it on an annual basis, and I just think that wherever we can, that was the whole purpose of the study, and I think it should be implemented fairly across the board.
Right, and the demographics of, they have all children, and the city is the same, you know.
I'm thinking, Armando, I thought one of the arguments that they had was also that we had limited fields for them to practice, so it kind of pushed them into practicing at night sometimes.
With these organizations, what they're doing is outgoing year-round, so when the daylight savings time changes, it makes it a little harder for them to get in there after school or after the coach is out of work. So there are some difficulties there. But we do have plenty of fields. They haven't been turned away. We have four soccer fields, yes, we have four soccer fields plus, we recently renovated the McCaffrey School area, so there's another three fields there. We're not in short of soccer fields for that organization.
Okay. Any more questions over here? Over here? Okay, so I guess we're done with that, and we're going to?
Want to read the recommendation?
So with that, it is staff's recommendation that council adopt the resolution that I just passed now approving the user regulatory fees for public services, and this is why we anticipate that we'll get a tutorial on how to use the program. So going forward, that we can bring this back on a more regular basis and instead of waiting decades later to bring this back to council. So with that, we would ask for council's acceptance of staff's recommendation.
Move to adopt resolution.
Second. Any questions? Well, I, go ahead.
It's a question of staff, under reading your section three of the resolution, will this come back to the city council for a July 1 adjustment, or will you be doing that internally?
Questions?
If it doesn't state, but normally we do it at a public meeting to the city.
Yeah. Actually, I, we anticipated bringing this back on July 1 of every year because we're hoping that we'll have a better idea of what the revenue impact or impacts would be. So I think at least for the first year, we would certainly bring that back to council at that point, then we can make that decision if it could be some type of an automatic. We want to keep council apprised of what the fee would look like and if you want to adjust anything else. But we just want to get this on the calendar so that it's more of a routine instead of waiting for decades.
Sure. So I think by the way that section three is written, it would authorize the finance director to make an automatic adjustment.
Right. Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you were saying.
The way that section three of the resolution is drafted is it would authorize the finance director to make an automatic inflationary adjustment on July 1 of every year based upon the CPI index that's referenced in the resolution. So it would not require city council action to make that CPI adjustment if you adopt this resolution. Certainly, certainly staff can inform the council or bring it back, but the section as drafted would provide that authorization to the director.
Are there other fees that we, so this would be for all fees on this, which were part of this report? Well, the effective, well, it doesn't give the effective date. I mean, you may authorize the increase, but the effective date is, could change based on the type of fee. You could have some effective conceivably immediately, others you've got to wait 60 days. Those that are, you know, connected with government code 66,000, you have a 60-day waiting period. So I don't know, it's just silent on it, so it appears that the resolution could provide some additional clarification.
Okay, I'm going to have to say something personally for me. I wish that there was more time to have gotten through all of this. I mean, I know we were supposed to read it and everything, and we did, but there's a lot of fee increases, and a lot of, well, I guess September 1 is one of those into effect.
Some go in July 1, some go in September 1. The development fees are September 1, right?
Right, okay. Oh, okay.
Some July 1, some January 1, some September.
Yeah, I saw mostly September and July.
So that was the basic fee. September was the development, and January were for those fees that the services were already in place and or contacted them existed.
I think, I think the analysis is good. I generally agree with the report, and I just think that on the increases of fees, I would prefer it come back to council, but that's just my preference, but it's up to council.
I could certainly.
For my direction of staff, that it come back next year before the first July 1 update.
I think that would give staff as well as council just a better sense of where we are with the user fees. You are correct that that's not how the resolution is presented, but we could certainly make that change to the resolution. So we do come back to council with any change on CPI.
You can just delete section three.
So we can make that amendment then, at this point, then?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to that. Did your motion include an adjustment on the light fees that we discussed? Mary Lou and I indicated I'd like to see it charged evenly across the board.
All right, my dear. My understanding was that we were going with what the staff had recommended in the study as opposed to what Parks and Rec had amended it to.
Correct, staff's recommendation is at $20.
Right. You think it should be more, correct?
I think it should be. Is there a reason that they should pay less than the other teams?
Well, I think they pay into the $10 a kid fee at the beginning of the year, and part of that was meant to pay for a portion of the light cost, if I remember correctly on that conversation.
The $10 fee is, $5 of that $10 is supposed to be dedicated to the Walker Park Turf renovation project. The other five is to help with any extra maintenance issues at these facilities in which they play. And then by participating in that program, they have, they get the light subsidized at a certain rate.
How much do like, let's just say, the softball or baseball teams pay for the lights? Do they go in at night?
Within our own league?
Yes.
It is included in the price.
Okay, good to know. Okay, and then?
But for the private league.
For the private league.
The tournaments, depending on facility they use, the sports complex is at $35 an hour, community parks at $55 an hour. So it depends on which facility you're using.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're saying is that the light fee is included in the $10, whatever the $10 fee is, so you have to adjust the $10 fee in order to adjust the correct light fee, is that correct?
No, you could set the light fee at 100% cost recovery if you'd like to. The $10 fee included that at the time of staff report, council actually compromised in staff's recommendation. I don't have that report in front of me, but our recommendation was higher than the $15, and it was even higher than, I believe, the $20 that we're recommending now.
Yeah, you're saying it's 32, 35, and 55.
Right, and so we compromised at 15. We felt at this point, a $5 adjustment was reasonable.
I would go with $35, not knowing which one it is. That would be my recommendation.
Let me call you to agree.
For an amended motion.
Okay, should you move it?
I'd move that.
Be amended? Okay, I'll second it.
Well, I don't think the original motion.
To approve?
Yeah.
Wasn't it to approve?
Yeah, but do we have a first and second? We have a first and second, so I think we need to ask if you would like to amend your motion to that. Parliament's very. I'm not sure what the substitute motion is.
I'm fine with the original motion that was made with the staff's recommendation on the fee as it is.
Okay.
And that's a 15.
The 61.
The one he opens, the substitute here.
So we're going to lump it all together now, then?
Yeah.
I don't know where we are anyway. Go ahead.
With what, one amendment to my original motion that we remove section three?
Right. And I agree.
Well, that's what I thought part of that was, was that's no.
Okay, so just as a point of clarification there, the motion that's on the floor is to approve the revised resolution that was passed out by the finance director with the deletion of section three relating to the annual adjustment, and the lighting fee would remain at the $20.
That is correct.
Okay.
So then if I made a substitute motion, get rid of, approve the reso, delete number three, and go at $35 for the lights, that would be my substitute motion.
How does that work?
Do we have to go with the first motion first, or?
So council member Campion has the right to make a motion for a substitute motion. If there's a second on the substitute motion, then the substitute motion would be voted on first.
I second. Okay. So call for the vote on the substitute motion? Okay, call for a vote, please.
Okay, on the substitute motion, Vice Mayor Singleton?
No.
Councilmember Payne?
No.
Councilmember Campion? Sorry. Councilmember Cruz?
Nay.
Mayor Collins?
We've been asking this a long time.
Okay, so now we go.
It's actually original.
The other motion.
Okay, now, then we're back to?
Call for the vote on that.
Do you want to call for the vote on, okay, call for the vote.
Okay, Vice Mayor Singleton?
This is on the original?
The original motion.
The section three of the vote.
The three, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the amendment of section three deleted, this $20.
Right, that would be, aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye, with the exception of no on the $20.
You're telling me. So, Councilmember Cruz?
I'm going to abstain from the whole thing. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Okay, what are we going back to now? The committee funding?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have one speaker, Mr. Gordon?
Actually, we probably have all the stuff that's out there. Do you want me to give my staff a first? I think we can decide. I'm going to, because we have.
Because we have a timing issue tonight, I'm going to be timing everyone from here on out for three minutes.
You're killing me.
I'm ready for you.
My name is John Gordon. I'm with the Galt Youth Committee. I'm going to read a written statement from my colleague, Lisa Klotz, who wasn't able to make it. I was fortunate. I was coming from Fresno racing here, and I got here just in time for two and a half hours.
Yeah, we're all looking.
City council members, thank you for giving the youth of Galt a very special opportunity to make a difference in our community. Your active and ongoing support of the Galt Youth Committee has allowed our youth to serve as leaders and begin to shape Galt into a youth-centered community through their actions of civic engagement, community service, and youth advocacy. Our role as adult mentors focused on empowering Galt youth to reach their full potential, to provide healthy role modeling, supportive and positive professional relationships as well as enhancing leadership and social skills. However, successful youth engagement requires careful fostering in a consistent and cooperative manner. For this reason, I ask you to approve the Galt Youth Committee's budget proposal, supporting our efforts as adult mentors, provide our youth with the tools they need to grow in their role as youth advocates, community leaders, and social... successful adults. Thank you for your consideration, Lisa Klotz. And I think what I would add to that is, as you know, leadership is not a paint-by-number. It's not a manual. I think when I got elected to the school board, you start to drink from a fire hose because you're trying to figure out what exactly your role is as well as how do you lead. We have just a wealth of really good adult mentors that are dedicated and renewed, a particular focus with where we want to take the 10 kids that serve on your youth committee. Obviously, you know, there's myself serving as elected official, so I have that level of expertise. Lisa Klotz, a community leader that has demonstrated powerful leadership by when we've had to close our school libraries, she was able to fundraise and keep the libraries open. We have another former Galt High student that went away to college. She's just come back wanting to get back to the community, finishing her law degree. So we have a lot of excited, very dedicated adults that want to serve. However, even with our individual strengths, we need to come together, and we have found in the short time that we've been here that we need to really learn how to relate to youth, how is it that we can be... come together with a single voice and be more organized. And I think that our proposal that we submitted to you, I think is a very good first step. I think the big picture is to ask for $10,000, and we know that that's not realistic. But I think by coming together and we're trying to build different partnerships, local partnerships, hopefully even bringing the costs further down, shows that we are turning ever so impossible and wanting to make this happen. In closing, I wanted to... We have two of our new members here that are... They're green. They're really green. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they did have been here since 2 o'clock, and they're all here supporting this effort as well.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, my bad. I forgot to let you... It's a report.
Well, that's okay. Okay. Do you want me to go over just two?
Yeah, if you'd like to, please.
Submitted, and I believe there are two other people out there that might want to speak that we're planning on... Just quickly, I'm just going to review the submittals. We had one by the youth committee, a funding request of $4,600 for youth development training, youth development technical assistance, and food associated with the two-day training. We received a request from the aging commission for $1,580, which is training, senior games, pamphlet printing, senior center supplies, et cetera, and also social, a spring social and a winter social beyond. And beautification committee, a funding request of $3,150 for advertising, including a canopy, flyers, flowers, daffodil bulbs to put around town, the library rose garden, street planters, and it also includes the Harvey Park renovation.
Okay, is there any...
Let me give you strictly... Sorry, the alternatives. So the total funding amount is $9,330, which would come from the general fund and would needed to be added to the final budget. Some alternatives, council could choose not to fund any of the requests or to fund a portion of the request.
Okay, are there any other committees that would like to speak, or...
No.
Okay. Janine St. Clair, and I'm chairperson on the beautification committee. And the list that Liz just read, that was basically the projects that we would like to be doing. That's not necessarily everything that we would be able to do, depending on funding, of course. And after listening through the budget synopsis, it's almost an embarrassment to be standing here asking for money when there are so many derelict areas that really need money. But as I said at the end, any, you know, amount would be greatly appreciated. We just have completed Harvey Park, and that just about depleted the funds. And since we are, I consider, a small committee with five members and one alternate, we don't typically have the manpower to get into large fundraising projects or things like that. But as I said, even though I am embarrassed, I'm still asking. No need to be embarrassed. Thank you. Because we do know and do appreciate the fact that you're volunteers, and you spend a lot of hours working for the city also. Aye, thank you.
Okay, Alvin, council? Pardon me? I was looking at Alvin, one to speak. You want to speak?
I'm representing the Commission on Aging. We put together a budget here that's basically a best guess estimate. But my... The real thing is, all the money we're talking about is, I see it as seed money, money just to start. Our whole goal would be to be self-sustaining. We're not looking for an ongoing budget that keeps going and going. Every time we want to try a project, we want to sustain it ourselves, you know? That's what we're looking for. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a resolution here, or do we need to... Resolution just the recommendation.
Asking for direction.
Asking for direction for the three requesting city committees for fiscal year 2014, 15. Hello, anybody got direction?
I just have a question. Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Who, at the staff level, will be monitoring the budgets or the expenditures or approving the budgets or expenditures?
Why not? Actually, each committee has a staff person, so we would probably be overseeing it, and Jason could chime in here.
There's a staff person assigned to each committee, and so they would be responsible for monitoring that budget.
Okay.
And don't think... So are we giving them the whole budget first, like you said, or do we wait for each day that happens?
Reimbursement.
But there's reimbursements, if they don't have any money, it's going to be hard to start the first initial part.
Most of the times, they'll bring their bills over and just put that through accounts payable. So they aren't out money. They can have the city bill.
So it's...
The staff person would approve it.
Oh, okay.
We usually try to keep spreadsheets on those kind of things, so...
Okay, so what's your pleasure, council?
I'd like to see it approved.
So you're making a motion? Okay. Moved and approved. Moved and seconded.
Entirement.
Can you tell us? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Okay, so that's been approved, five to view with all everybody's...
Approved.
Okay, we did the cost calculation, so now we're at the community energy emergency response team funding request.
Okay, that's Cert.
Cert, yes.
Cert, and that's me. Just a brief presentation.
I didn't see you out there ever putting a band.
Here I am. I'm not a Cert person. But we did receive a request from the Consumers Community Services District to provide some funding for their community emergency response team. I think the council is familiar with the program, not going to go into a lot of the details. They provide training to our community members on how to be self-sufficient during a disaster, hopefully relieve some burden from our first responders in the event of a, you name it, any kind of disaster. They also provide assistance during various events and activities we have throughout the year. You see their trailer out there. They do a lot of work in the community. In the past, they've relied on grant funding to support their program. That funding is now dried up. I know they're still working on finding grant revenues out there, but until they do, they're asking the city of Galt as well as the city of Elk Grove to provide a funding commitment, and they've requested $5,000 from the city. The total amount of money required to run the program is $30,000. CCSD has provided a commitment of $15,000, and I believe the city of Elk Grove has provided a commitment of $10,000. So they've asked us for a commitment of $5,000. The funding request is not in the budget, so the council would like to fund this request. Staff recommends that you approve the funding request tonight and ask the staff at it, include it in the final budget document that will be provided to the city council at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
That's all. And then TSD, I know is here. I don't believe they wanted to make a presentation, but Chief Hanson told me, but they're here. Council has any questions?
Yeah, she Robert back there.
Any questions or comments?
Can I make the statement first, please?
Sure.
Okay. I'm a member of the Cert team, and some things that folks don't understand is that they're not only at our festivals and our fairs and stuff providing a Band-Aid or a brace or some wrap for somebody who fell, but Cert members go through a lot of training. We do search and rescue. It's not only here in Galt. We do it up in Elk Grove. I've done it. We've done it for the officers that have fallen here in Galt, and it's a very worthwhile cause. I've been out searching for people in the middle of the night when you all are sleeping. But if we did not have certain places, it would certainly be costing the city a lot more money as far as budget than just $5,000. It would be costing us a lot more in extra staffing for the police department and other agencies. So I really... I just want to tell you how important this Cert is. And also, one more thing, they will come to your school, they'll come to your business. I think Robert is still pre-charge, right? And they will give you instruction on disaster preparedness. All you got to do is call them. So I just highly recommend it, and I appreciate them coming and asking. I think it's worthwhile for us to spend the money.
I want to totally agree with you. They are volunteers. They do an excellent service for us. I know when we're anywhere, having a festival with a lot of people around, I for one, I'm glad to see that they're there. And so with that, any more... So do I have a motion?
They do. I think they motioned a second. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. You've already had the fact now. Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
No, we already did this, right? Okay. So now we're on...
We did the user fee.
And we did the budget, right?
Yeah.
Cost allocation. What did we miss? Cost allocation plan?
We never did that.
No, we didn't do... We did the cost allocation plan.
You never moved it.
Oh, user fee, okay.
What we were on here.
All right. See you then.
So getting... Well, it is on the B. So anyways, it is staff's recommendation that council adopted the resolution revising the indirect cost allocation methodology to use a three-year actual cost average and to also include the police services as a central service department. We've actually been using a cost allocation plan since the 1993, '94 fiscal year. And in June of 2010, we actually started to use a three-year average. We saw that some of the expenditures in any given year could increase or decrease significantly in an effort to actually create a more stable environment. We recommended back in 2010 that we use a three-year average for budgeting purposes. What we did not recommend at that time was to actually use the actual amounts over a three-year average. So this evening, we are asking that we make a couple of changes during the budget process. We saw some areas that we could improve the process on, and the first one is that in addition to using the three-year average for budgeting, that we should use a three-year for the actual amounts that are being implemented as part of the cost methodology. It assisted in creating a more smoothing effect instead of seeing spikes in the amounts of support services. And secondly, the other adjustment is that we'd like to include the police services as a central service department once again. In 2007, police services were... It was decided back then that police services would not be considered a central service department, but as presented earlier this evening by the city manager, we are aware that the police department does provide central service support, central support services as he mentioned earlier. So we think it is important to identify what that cost of service is to the other enterprises as part of the budget process. If we choose not to recover that full amount, that would be one thing, but we do believe that it is important to at least at a bare minimum is to know what that cost of support service is. So with that, we are asking this evening that council accept the methodology as presented, and the financial impact in the current budget, we have actually incorporated the three-year average. But again, it is staff's recommendation that council accept the revised indirect cost methodology, which uses a three-year actual average and also to include the police services as a central service department for purposes of the cost allocation plan. With that, that concludes my report. And if council has any questions, I'd be more than glad to address them this afternoon.
Questions? Questions? Barbara? No? Okay.
For police services, if you haven't been included, they're not included in the three-year average. It's going to be whatever the actual is for next year, or was it done last year?
It was not. We did not have the information for the police services. So for the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 13, 14, we would ask that we would start to gather the data and start to include them in the three-year average.
And I'm just thinking back, there is, as far as this methodology is concerned, each department does their own analysis, or is it uniform today now?
It's still on a department basis. One of the tasks, one of the goals of the finance department is that we develop a standardized form for the cost methodology to track time. In addition to that, one of the other goals is that we can somehow dovetail the payroll process with time recording. We have heard, I'm not sure if it's urban legend or not, but community development department actually has implemented a process where they actually do their timesheet, and it feeds directly into the cost allocation worksheet as well. So we are looking at that model. We actually... Donna Crew is very familiar with the cost allocation plan, and one of the tasks that she'll be providing some support services on is actually using the timesheet and feeding it directly into the cost allocation plan.
Because it would be good to have some uniformity in this methodology, because it has not been.
We recognize that. It is a shortfall, and we are hoping to improve on that process.
And I did have someone ask a question. I don't think you'd have the answer tonight before the meeting. They were... They wanted to know what the actual abatements are on both water and sewer funds for the, I guess, in the prospective year.
Okay.
As part of the budget. And I know you probably don't have that with you tonight, if you could just get that to me, something.
Can you repeat that?
Abatements. Abatements, uh, do the cost allocation program?
We, we do have that available.
Oh, you do, okay, okay. If you can show.
It seems efficient.
You don't have to do it right now, but.
No, it would be, theoretically, just like the 30 seconds, I'd be more than happy to do that change.
Well, this is one of the questions you prepared for?
This is under the most frequently asked question. So, um.
Schedule five?
It is under Schedule five, it is correct. Um, and part of the cost of support services for the, I'm sorry, you did say for the water enterprise fund?
Uh, water and sewer.
The water enterprise fund, we're budgeting just approximately $439,000 for support services. And that is, um.
There's not a line item on here to identify.
No, that's the total amount of support ser, uh, transfers. So what you would see, um, under Schedule five, it says to the general fund, and then it says from.
Okay.
And it's page 35 of the budget document, and it says from Culture Rec, it says water fund, excuse me, and so for the year one, fiscal year 14, 15, it's $439,850.
Okay, I get you.
That would be the amount.
Waste water, seven, six, seven, sixteen?
That is correct.
Okay. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Keep, keep in mind on the, uh, support services for the utilities, it's not just, uh, the administrative services, so for example, the public works director, the engineers, they're all charged to general fund, and so all of their time then gets, gets cost allocated back out to the utilities. That's part of that process.
Are, are the, are the, are, is the analysis that's done by department, is that made as a public record? Is that available as a public record?
I think they're still working documents, so, um, I think once it comes to us and we actually transition that into a, the cost plan, that is the working document. But I, I don't believe that what departments submit, because we do have some other information in the, what they submit to us.
The final part?
I wouldn't think that some of the working documents are considered public records, no.
Okay.
Okay, so the recommendation for that would be to adopt a resolution revising the indirect cost allocation method, methodology, to use three-year actual cost average and include police services as a central service department. Do I have a motion on that?
Move it up.
Okay. Barbara and, uh, Mark? Either or. And call for the.
Oh. Vice Mayor Spiegelton?
Hi.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Thank you.
Alright.
So, yeah, I think, we've been hopping around, so I think.
Well, capital.
Where we are is the capital improvement program, so if council would like, I can do a brief presentation on the CIP, and then we can take, uh, see if there's any final public comment, and then ask the council for questions and comment on both the budget and the CIP. So, do you want to do that?
I just want to add one thing, what time do we have to be out of here, Mike? Somebody's in at six, right?
Six thirty, we have to be out by six.
So, uh, we have to be out by six.
And then we have another item that we added.
Yes.
And, okay. Alright. The, uh, capital improvement.
Okay.
Program?
Capital improvement program for the five-year program, 2014 to 2019. It's a, it's a long-range capital planning document, uh, includes budget appropriations for phasing of projects, prioritization, um, identifying future needs. It basically allows us to plan for all the future major capital improvement projects in the city. Anything over $30,000 typically we include in the CIP. It includes both revenues and expenditure estimates, and we update it every year. In this year's CIP, what we're presenting to you is 70 total projects, total project costs of $592 million. Forty-six million of that total is in the five-year time period. The rest of it is what we consider beyond CIP, so those are long-range planning to build out the general plan in the city, new roads, new water infrastructure, things like that, that won't be done for years or decades. Um, but we want to plan for it, we want to be able to collect fees for it. Uh, but within the five years, we have about $46 million. Next year, we have $25.6 million in appropriations, and then year two of the budget in 15, 16, about $12.1 million in CIP appropriations. Um, and then the, the, the big total of 446 is beyond the CIP. So here's just an update on some of the progress we have going on with our capital projects right now. Um, recently completed or nearly completed projects include the Twin Cities Roundabouts project, um, $11.6 million, the Livo Pump Station and Forest Main Project at $6.9 million. We have some other projects that are, um, under construction right now, or will be under construction shortly, for water meter implementation program, and the Central Interchange Landscape Project, we'll see those both, uh, going, going shortly. We have a number of other projects that are in design phases right now, you can see from the list, we have our Railroad Quiet Zones, uh, Regional Law Enforcement Training Center, Forest Street Parking Lot and Open Space Improvements, uh, C Street Central Complete Streets Project, Simmerhorn Curly and Waterline Extension, and our big water wastewater project, the wastewater treatment plant arsenic and nitrogen project that we've been talking a lot about recently. So a lot of big dollar, a lot of big projects that are, um, either underway, in design, or we're getting ready to go, so, and this doesn't count some other kind of annual programs like our annual pavement rehabilitation projects that are getting ready to go, it's bid shortly, which is another very large project, and a lot of other kind of projects we do on a day-to-day basis. This is just kind of a snapshot of some of the bigger items I'll go through briefly. This pie chart up here, actually, let me, I do have the handouts for this too, so let me hand that out to the city council on the PowerPoint presentation. This pie chart represents the funding sources for all of our capital improvement projects. And you can see the big blue one, or purple, whatever color that is, um, is about 52% charges for services. Charged services, that's largely your water, your wastewater, your service fees, that's the big ones, because a lot of, within our five-year timeframe, a lot of those projects are water wastewater projects. We know we have a $26 million project right now, half of that is a one wastewater project, and so we've got some other big ones there. Other major ones include grant money, federal state money that we have here, it's a large at 21% measure A, uh, that's the half-set sales tax countywide for transportation projects, so our road rehab projects, uh, fall in there. And then developer fees, these are all of our impact fees for Walker Park and all the other projects that we have. And you can see general fund and Culture Recreation Fund are very small, because we don't have a lot of general fund and Culture Recreation dollars to be putting onto capital projects, so this general fund money is actually, I think, misleading, because this is CDBG money. We don't have any general fund CIP projects in, on the horizon, with the exception of maybe the police, uh, the police building roof project, I think that's probably the only one that we have, um, that's in here. Culture Recreation, we have a few small projects, we talked about Tribola, we've got the Aquatic Center project and a few other ones, but most of them, we just don't have the funding to do it. So you can see the bulk of that money is coming from these other sources. And here's how it's divided by category, see wastewater is the big one, again, the big blue monster here, uh, waters, you know, here, transportation is the, is the other big one, and then parks and rec, uh, general improvements, equipment. So this is kind of how the pie, this 46 million dollar pie is sliced up. So I'm just going to provide brief highlights of the CIP document in each of the different categories, what's, what's in there. Within the document is all kinds of detail about funding source, what years the improvements are going to be made, and then the description about why the project is needed, what we've done to date, what we're planning on doing, so I, I would direct the public or council to the website or to the printed document if you want more information. One of the, the first projects on the, the general improvements is, uh, some city hall renovation work, includes work for ADA compliance, for security, also for some IT expansion needs, and the improvements here are based on anticipated receipts of developer impact fees. Because we don't have a lot of, uh, other money, any kind of expansion, we can use developer impact fees, some of the other related security and ADA is just available as, as funding is available for that, for that project. PD renovation, we already talked about, is the, the re-roof and HVAC work. Regional Law Enforcement Training Center, expansion Phase One, where we just took this to the council, I believe, at the last meeting, to revise the design contract to get that Phase One going, so that's going to be happening this summer, and hopefully we'll be out to bid, um, later this year and get something constructed out there. And then, uh, the other one I wanted to highlight is the Forest Street Park, Union Pacific Railroad Property, uh, we've been following this closely, AB 2493, um, was passed through the assembly last week, it's now gone on to the senate, so we're hopeful it's going to do, to senate committees next week. Um, Senator Galgiani, who represents us, is on one of those committees, so I called her office, um, just, uh, yesterday or, or last week, and they're on board supporting that, so hopefully we get that through, and if that money goes through, that means we can start building some of the improvements, that means our paved the way for our entertainment complex, the work on the railroad property, C Street, Forest Street, all this stuff we've planned, so fingers crossed. And we are working on the, the design with that, as well as seeing the Forest Street projects.
Along those lines, assuming that that does go through, we have, what, about $600,000 in CDBG funds dedicated for C Street, Old Town, uh, several other projects. Couldn't those funds be redirected if the bond proceeds were made available? Because the bond proceeds were specific, for specific projects, correct? Right. CDBG is not for a specific project, I mean, it can be for anything that benefits the community and meets certain criteria. So it would appear to me that it would be prudent to hold off on expending the CDBG funds until we have a decision on whether the bond proceeds are going to be available through the redevelopment.
The, most of the CDBG funds earmarked for the Railroad Quiet Zone project, and, and that's not identified as part of the bond, uh, proceeds.
Right.
I believe that's.
But there's, there's still, uh, probably 150, uh, well, 150, 350, about $350,000 that is not earmarked, so that's 279 on this, on the.
I don't have all the numbers in front of me, my recollection is that we have, there's two projects that the CDBG money is for, it's for the Quiet Zone as well as the, uh, Central Gulf, the Complete Streets Project, and it's for design, so I believe we're spending, it's not for construction, I believe it's for design, which we're, we're spending right now. I don't know if we've actually gotten CDBG reimbursements yet, but, um, that's underway, so I don't think we could re-appropriate the design money, um, and the public works can certainly sign in on that.
Yeah, we, we could go back and ask that it be reassigned, we'd have to stop mid-stream with what's, you know, the consult contracts are underway. My understanding, and we're about to bring to you in a couple of weeks, a TDA Annual Allocation Approval, uh, Package to allow us to claim back our costs. Um, but our, our distribution category, being under the county and the size that we are, uh, I believe limits us to basically capital improvement projects rather than, you know, community service type, type issues. So, uh, I think we are limited to infrastructure improvements under our current funding category now. We can ask to reprioritize which projects those things go to. But it does have to target general community benefit and particularly low, low to moderate income type benefits. Well, I was looking really prospectively at the, at the, you know, next two years, not knowing that it had already, monies had already been expended, and this is basically a reimbursement, so it's a reimbursement for 14, 15? Right, and to budget the costs, we have to budget the offsetting revenue, which we bill in a rear end. But 15, 16 is not.
Yeah, I, I believe, I believe that's true, I don't think we've, we've allocated the 15, 16 money yet.
Right.
So if, you know, if the council, and I could be wrong.
We, we've earmarked, um, for fiscal year 15, 16 on two projects, we're estimating $150,000 of CDBG money, and we've allocated $75,000 to each of the two projects, and one of them is the, um, the Central Gulf, the Complete Streets Project, and the other one is for the Forest Street Parking Lot and Open Space, so $75,000 each in year two.
But the question is, we have an encumbered, or we haven't expended costs, which would require reimbursement? Anne is our newly promoted administrative analyst, and she keeps our details and keeps me straight, so, uh, what can you do to enlighten us?
Okay, so on the CDBG, you are correct, in that, um, it is for design for the railroad project and for the Central Gulf C Street quarter, okay? What we're currently doing is for design. So we have, we are in year 14 for CDBG, and we are claiming off of years 12 and 13, okay? Under design. So as we move forward, um, I, we, we budgeted, um, revenue continuing on for design for the Central Gulf Quarter, and then we will be moving into construction for the railroad, okay? And that will be for, uh, the one coming up in January for 15. So the $75,000 that is split between, it's still split between.
Forest Street, Forest Street and C Street.
Right, and that's, that's under the construction side.
Okay, but, so those funds have not been expended?
They have.
So we have not expended funds for reimbursement purposes?
Not under the construction portion, we are in the middle of doing it for the design portion.
And I'm, and I'm just talking about the 15, 16?
Right, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So maybe we would want to reconsider that, assuming that the bond proceeds are made available to the city, because those two projects, I think, would qualify under that.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think, I think that makes sense, I think, um, we don't actually have to make any adjustments now, because we can do another update next year before we do the 15, 16, and if we get the bond money, then we can reallocate those funds, because it would free up, free up that $150,000 in 15, 16 that we could use for, for another CDBG project. So, but right now, I think, until we identify another project, it makes sense to just go ahead and keep, keep the program the way it is, but then recognize that if we do get that money, we can take a look at reallocating the construction save CBG, CDBG money for something else.
Uh, the only, and in, not, not knowing where we were on expenditure and reimbursements, my, my big question here, under Parks and Recreation, is I think that we should spend, and I'm, you know, I'm talking to council, I think we should spend or include in this budget $16,000 for ovens across the street at Little Town. I really think it's, uh, something that should be seriously considered, given the age of those things and the condition, so I would ask council to, 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 uh, please, agree with that.
Um, Kurt, are you saying, I'm confused with all these CDBG funds and everything, are you wanting to take money from that and allocate it for the oven, so?
No, I, I.
What's the connection?
I would leave that, well, we're under Parks and Rec's CIP program, and I would let the city manager figure out where to fund it with the oven.
Okay.
So it's a different topic.
I'm not CDBG. Well, I thought maybe I was a posse. Total? How many?
$19,500.
$19,500. I would just simply ask if that'd be included in the 14, 15 CIP, uh, under Parks and Rec for Little Town.
So, it's a, it's a replacement of an existing item, so the funding would come from, um, Fund Six, which is Culture Recreation, there's no money available in Fund Six, so that means it would come from the general fund. If the council, if the council wanted to replace the ovens, that would be the funding, the funding source that the council would look to.
I would, um, have to, um, agree with Kurt, um, on the need to do something, uh, about that kitchen, I've been involved in it a few times, and if you don't know the secret way of doing it, it doesn't work, but, uh, also, just the fact that we, we rent this out and lease it to the public, I think it reflects on our image as a community.
Sure.
As well as the safety, uh, factor that could be involved with appliances. I know it's a lot of money, but I think, I think we should find the money to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree.
Okay, do we need a motion, how does that go, a motion, or?
Yeah, if you want to take a, a vote to add that, direct staff to add that to the budget, it actually wouldn't be a CIP project, because it's less than $30,000, but you could direct us to add it to the budget, under minor capital.
What fund would it come out of, please?
General fund.
General fund, right.
$19,500?
Uh, that's what. I was going to round it, $20,000, but move $19,500, uh, make a motion to approve funds in the amount of $19,500 for replacement stoves and ovens in Little Town Center.
And I will second that motion, thank you for that.
Okay, call for the vote, please, Liz, Vice Mayor Spiegelton?
Before the vote.
I just wanted to recommend that we fund it from the Culture Recreation Fund, but if there is a shortfall, that it would be backfilled with general fund in case there is.
I agree with men the motion, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready?
Uh-huh.
I just had to get the motion right. Okay, Vice Mayor Spiegelton?
Hi.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Um, do you want me to go through the highlights really quick of the other Parks and Rec projects? Any other? Um, Harvey Park renovation, we talked about grant money, $170,000 is included in the CIP as well as the offsetting revenue. well as the offsetting revenue. Phase 1B, this was the council's strategic objective, is to identify when we could move forward with Phase 1B. The council may recall, Phase 1B is two lighted baseball fields, restroom, new parking lot, as well as completion of the roadway through, through the park. I think it's about a 3.6 million, a $3.6 million project. And based on our current development impact fee, expectations that it may be as soon as 2015, '16, they might be able to move forward. Certainly wouldn't be completed then, but that's when we'd be able to start the, the process to get that out to bid and get that awarded. So again, just depends on developer impact fees, but we're looking like we can actually move forward with that over the next couple of years, so. And then the other one, we talked about a little bit too, is the Chabola Center, and there's some aquatic center rehabilitation work that needs to happen on HVAC, as well as tile work and some other things, so.
Seems like we're always doing tile work.
We are. We just finished a major project.
How come?
It's just, it's an aging facility. I don't think the tile's ever been replaced there, and so last, end of last summer, we had these tiles that started buckling.
Yeah.
And so our staff went in and fixed what they could to try to get us through the year, which they did a great job at. And then this off-season, we just finished replacing, I don't know how many square feet, but a pretty big area of tile, and it was 40, $50,000, I think, worth of work. I don't remember if you guys remember what the contract was.
Just a quick, what are you, when is that project?
The, for the tile work?
Uh huh. The renovation on that.
I think the, the next tile work is on the competition pool, and that's scheduled for '15, '16, if I remember right. Is that correct?
Yes, year two.
Year two, yeah.
Okay.
So the next category is transportation, and there's a few new projects in here. One is, well, maybe one new project. One is the Complete Streets rehab at Eighth Street. This is the grant money we got from Secogs this last year, about $1.5 million for that. There's some other ancillary money that went for bike lanes and sidewalks and things that are in other projects, but the funding for that is scheduled in '15, or '16, '17. Another major project that we're working on getting off the ground is this Transit Operation Maintenance Center. The city owns some property off of Elm, behind our existing courtyard annex property, and so there's some money floating out there between Secogs, Sac County, and the city. We're trying to figure out how we're going to do that, so we're working on design, getting some design proposals going and get that. So this coming year, you should see some, not to see some construction going, but see some design work happening on that, on that project. It's ultimately about a $6 million project, so stay tuned. And then annual road rehab, we have about $800,000 budgeted each year. All that money's coming from Measure A Fund. Water, one new project, this is related to our NPDS permit, the five-year permit on the wastewater side. There's also some on the water side, removal, removal of sludge, arsenic sludge. We take it out on the water side, and then we backwash it down the sewer, and, and now we, the, the new sewer regulations say you can't, our arsenic level's too high on the sewer side, so now we gotta take it out, and we actually have to, we have to truck it over to the wastewater treatment plant to have it removed as part of our solids removal process. It's, it's expensive. We have, on the, on the operating budget side, there's some part-time staff, as well as a truck necessary for people to operate this new process, where they're going to be filling a tanker truck full of this nasty stuff and hauling it off to the wastewater treatment plant, but it's part of the regulations that we have to do. Water meter implementation is underway. And then another big project next year is Old Town Water Main Replacement, some old aging infrastructure in the ground that needs to be replaced. That'll, that'll start work next year. On the wastewater side, our major project is the, the arsenic and nitrogen treatment project that we've been talking about. Another one that the council just, we just talked about is the NPDS renewal project, the multi-hundreds of thousands of dollar project to do all of our studies and get ready for the next big permit from the state. Another major one that we want to kind of get ahead of the curve on is the southeast trunk sewer main design. This is a main sewer line on the, kind of over by our Simmerhorn, the Simmerhorn project and the other side of the freeway, where the notch is, where a lot of the growth is going to occur on the, on the east side of the city. We want to start designing to figure out how that's going to be built that way, when we actually have builders coming in, we've got a little bit of a jumpstart, so we don't have to then go and do environmental and go and do design. We'll have it on the shelf, environmental done, designed done, ready to go, and it'll speed up some of those entitlement processes. And the final one under sewer is capital maintenance projects. We have a major project next year for a new sewer main down B Street, almost a million-dollar project. So again, kind of replacing old infrastructure in the old part of town, just necessary maintenance projects as part of our, our water and sewer master plan that we need to do. Last category is equipment. We have three pieces of equipment that I know Aiden's excited about. We have all for next year, a new street sweeper that we've actually needed for several years and kind of pushed it off, and we, we've got a deal where we're going to be, it's a lease purchase, so we're going to spread the cost out over a number of years with the interest rates so low it really was attractive for us. A new backhoe, and then new herbicide sprayer truck, all next year planned. And so that's the brief overview of our CIP, just like I did on the budget. I do want to acknowledge our, our hardworking staff on these projects. Public Works, finance kind of took most of the brunt of the, the hard work on the, on the operating budget. Public Works, there's the brunt on the CIP side, not only on the preparation of the projects, but obviously delivery of the projects, doing, you know, managing the contracts and all the headaches that go along with that, getting roadways opened and all those fun things. I want to recognize them and the hard work that they do. There's, there's a lot of work. I know we heard tonight from residents that were frustrated about a project that wasn't as moving as quickly as they would like, but when you look at all the priorities that we have, it, it's, there's a toll and there's a strain on staff to try to get it all done, and I know our staff is working very hard to do all of them. And the Ton project is on the top of the list, trying to move forward, along with all the other projects that we have, and it certainly is a commitment by staff, I know it's a commitment by council, and so we're doing our best to try to move, move things along in the way that the council and the community expects. So I want to, I think they deserve some acknowledgement for the hard work that they do on a, on a day-to-day basis, delivering those projects and moving them forward. So that's it from staff, that's kind of a summary. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know they are as well, on both the CIP and the operating budget, so we didn't really get a chance to do that, so if you want to, we can open up questions to either document and see if there's any other changes that the council wants to consider, or how they would do that.
I was just gonna say, before we move too far away from this, under the equipment, I thought we were buying a chili, or not chili, a cherry picker, not chili picker, cherry picker truck.
Bucket, yeah.
That's on...
It is, it is in the program. It's not funded next year. Let me see, I can, I can find when this is funded.
I thought I saw it.
It is, it's the aerial bucket truck. It's in '16, '17.
Oh.
So it's two years out, three years out. It's about $150,000 purchased, so right now, we don't have the funds for, we're not recommending the council, fund it. If the council wanted to make that a priority, then we could certainly re, reship some of those priorities.
No, I thought I saw this was included, it's been included, but it's not.
Okay, can I ask a question? Where's the Ton Memorial? That's on capital, is that on the capital improvement budget, or is that on the...
Well, it will be under the CIP, because it's over $30,000. It's not here right now. We don't have any, what, what the plan was, we met with the, the CHAMP organization about six weeks ago, and what we told them was, we were working on getting these design proposals solicited, and then once we had those, we would bring that back to the council to ward the design contract and also appropriate funds, if the council wanted to appropriate funds at that time to do that.
Well, you know, I, I don't know why, but way back when we were talking about it, I really thought that somewhere along the line, and I don't think I'm wrong, that we said that we were going to match what they collected. I, I just really think way back in the beginning of it, that it was a project, we were an ad hoc committee, not them. They're the nonprofit that's out there trying to raise funds, and so I'm going to just go out there and say, I think we need to appropriate 50 grand for that. So I'm making a motion.
Well, that's why I was asking earlier, if we could at least get some kind of commitment today from council, if we could at least match their funding with they raised, not to exceed 50,000, but...
Okay, yeah.
To match what they have, have, have made, and, and to include also the design part of that.
I thought we already designed it.
Well, it's changing, because it gets real expensive.
We did a conceptual design.
We get a conceptual, right.
Well, it was conceptual, but it was, it had a lot of phases. No, but we had lots of phases of what was coming in, so we gotta go back and redo all that now?
No, you take the conceptual design, and then you do actually, actually construction documents.
But I thought we...
So that means what elevation, the sprinkler lines are, how the slopes are, all the detail engineering work that needs to happen.
Okay, yeah, I like to...
I would second Mary Lou's motion.
So just to be, just to be clear, the funding source would be general fund.
Mm-hmm.
It would be, from what I heard, both the mayor and vice mayor say, it would be a matching amount up to $50,000 inclusive of construction as well as design. Is that accurate?
That's my intention.
Yes, correct.
Yes. Okay. So it's been moved in seconds. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Spiegel.
Hi.
Councilor Paine.
Aye.
Councilor Campion.
Aye.
Councilor Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Oh, one more item. Well, that's the, that's the special allocation. That's it, is this?
Are there any other comments or questions?
On the budget, any more comments? Because poor Jason's over there going, quit, quit adding up these dollars. I know, it's, it's tough making everything work. And I know when everybody starts whatever it is, it means you gotta, you gotta drive and run home.
We do our best.
Yes, I know. I know we do. So there are no more questions on the budget.
Okay, so we have our direction, so we'll bring back the final budget and CIP to the council at the next council meeting, with those decisions that we made today.
And I would like to say, after, you know, I looked through both the operating budget and, and the CIP pretty closely, and, and it is, it's, it's pretty much a status quo budget, with the small, you know, a couple of minor adjustments, and one thing I will say with regard to the budget, when you go to any, any of the, any of the budget, you look at, you look at, say, capital outlay under council, under council department, there's no discussion when it comes back to capital equipment, where there's an expenditure, like last year, it was 205,000, that wouldn't apply, but in, in the 15, 16, there's no explanation at all within the budget of what the capital expenditures are.
For the equipment?
Yeah, for anything. I mean, it, 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 it doesn't explain anything, and we used to have...
Are you on the CIP or the operations?
I'm on the operations.
Okay, the minor capital?
Well, it says capital outlay.
Right, I think what you're looking for, or at, at right now, is page six of the budget document, is that's the current budget, so there really isn't a change to it, so the budget has already been approved, and so the documents that we would have had during the midterm would have already said there's a new vehicle, or for construction of the council chambers, or so forth, so what is, what we provide more description of is the year one and year two of the budget document.
Right, and that's what I was, I was looking at here, and I didn't see it, are they doing the explanation under the departmental statement, or where?
Budget comment.
Yeah, so the budget comment's under page three of the, of the document, under council capital, so we, we address the request for year one and year two. In theory, the budget for the current year has already been approved by council...
Right.
As part of the midterm, so we didn't want to reiterate that, but that's really what, what we're presenting at this point.
Okay, and, and I'm using a very bad example, but I've got the public safety measure R budget, and it has 40,000 in the 14, 15 year, under budget comments. Under capital, it says, amounts for outfitting vehicles previously purchased are presented within fiscal year 1415. I don't know, what does that, what's that, what did we buy?
So what did we buy?
Yeah, what did we buy? Or what are we buying? Vehicles?
With the 40 grand?
It says, amounts for outfitting vehicles previously purchased. So I don't know what we're buying.
What occurred is, the vehicles were supposed to be equipped as far as all the lighting equipment, armor room vehicles, radios, and what have you, and that wasn't done. So that additional 40,000 is 20,000 per vehicle to, to be able to equip them with all the equipment needed in a vehicle, otherwise you have a car with nothing in it.
I understand. I mean, that's just an example, and, and not to pick on police or anybody else, but the, the description of capital outlay is minimalistic. How's that?
More description.
More description, please. It would be helpful, at least for the reader, because I know you always want to know how to make it usable as a friendly document.
We would continue in that perspective.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Enjoyed reading it.
So we, we, we've agreed with all the, do we have to make a motion, or no?
I think we've made all the motions.
Okay. Okay, well, we need one more motion on, do we need one more motion on this?
No, I'm just gonna ask if, if council couldn't go, just, just so we could recap, because our task now is to come back with a schedule four with these adjustments, and I just want to be sure that we captured them all. If, if we could just recap the adjustments then, over and above what was already included in the staff report. So Michelle, if you could walk us through the adjustments, I, I have some as well, but I want to be sure that we captured them all.
Okay, I have the third, that's $5,000 in 2015, out of general funds. Also, out of general funds, the committee funding, there was a separate report that was approved, that's $9,330. Oh, wait, that one was already done in the budget.
I believe that is a, an additional request.
Yeah, some additional, correct.
Okay, then the Ton Memorial, and that was $50,000, also in 2015. Then jumping to Fund Six for the Littleton stoves and ovens, I have $19,500 in fiscal year 2015.
Can I just say something? When we're saying 2015, are, do we mean fiscal year 14 to '15?
Yes.
Just making sure, because I wanted to make sure it wasn't 15 to '16.
No, in theory, they are available until July 1, 2014.
Okay. So it's kind of confusing sometimes. Okay, did I interrupt?
Those are all the changes that I have as well, so unless we missed something, if council could let us know.
That's it.
Okay, then at this point, our task will be to bring back Schedule Four for consideration at the general June 17 meeting.
Thank you. And before we get to the last one, I just do want to reiterate to thank staff for all the hard work they do. We know this doesn't happen in a day and a half, and we do appreciate all of you and all the hard work you do to get these documents to us in a timely manner, so that we can look through it. And as you can see, we didn't have, we just had a few things we wanted to add, nothing that we wanted to take away, so I think that says a lot for all of you, and to let you know that we really appreciate all your hard work. Okay.
I agree.
One more. Do we all agree?
I agree.
Absolutely.
Agreed? Okay, so one more, and then we'll be out of here. The urgent agenda item addition.
Okay, maybe Steve can read the council on this.
Yes, maybe, maybe a uncalled-for preparatory comment. I just want to apologize that we have lagged a little behind on the officer Ton memorial, if that's left the committee or the community with the impression that it's not a priority. In fact, I met with Jason one-on-one, and tried to, how can we get this moving at a faster pace? And part of the recommendation to go to an outside consultant was, they were five engineers to deliver, you know, $36 million worth of projects. The only way we're going to get this thing moving is to get some outside help, and so we actually...
Well, I hope it's not really extensive outside help.
Well, no, and that's why we're soliciting basically a discounted corporate sponsor approach. We can't solicit funding as staff, but we can ask, let them know what the community need is, it's a nonprofit involved, and tell them what we think the budget might be, so...
thank you.
Hopefully, just wanted to sort of do a mea culpa there, that we're a little behind that curve. And an example of why is this next urgent item that you authorized us to bring in the budget. We anticipated the need to replace the HVAC system at Chabola Center. It's been on its last legs probably for a couple of years. We've done several emergency repairs, and we're having trouble keeping the temperatures down in the last, it is our official cooling center in the event of a heat emergency, and we're having trouble maintaining comfortable temperatures there. Went up, took a look at the system, and we're about to lose the second half of the cooling system. We lost first half several years ago. And so rather than wait till July to get that started, knowing that we're facing hot weather, we're recommending that you authorize us, from current reserves, from the general fund reserves, to take that $51,000, let us move forward now to accomplish those emergency repairs, and then appropriate reduction would be made in our ask that's in the capital improvement budget, and then further that you authorize us to invoke the city's emergency procurement procedures, waiving formal bid requirements, to let us move forward and protect health, welfare, and safety of our community with that on an expedited basis. So it basically, we're asking you to give us the money a few weeks early, let us get started on that project, and we would, we might have to rent some equipment to provide some temporary cooling. We have some existing remaining funds that could help with that. We have a band-aid repair for $1,000 that might get us through that. Cheaper than renting cooling, but if it doesn't work, we're putting together Plan B.
And it really comes to light with this 104 degree weather, right?
Yes.
And it is important, like you said, that we have Chabola Center open in case of this kind of weather. So I guess I need a motion?
We'll move.
Okay.
I just want to ask something real quick.
Okay.
Okay. Because nobody asked, I wanted to ask a question, so I'm gonna ask a question. $51,000 exactly, I'm sorry. What, what is that going to do? Now, this is advancement of monies that would be available as of July 1st, correct?
Right. If you were to prove the CIP has recommended, that money would not be available till July 1st.
Right.
We're kind of struck up to get that.
Okay. So what's that gonna buy us?
Basically, we're gonna replace the, the condensers and the compressors, and does that also get us new heat? Furnace of complete HVAC hardware repair, we'll probably be using the existing ductwork, but basically all mechanical at Chabola Center would be replaced.
Like new?
As new.
Okay.
That's good, because we're always band-aid.
Yeah, I don't, and that's why I wanted to make sure it wasn't just a Band-Aid cure. I wanted to make sure that we were gonna have a.
$51,000, you replace two units there, or one large unit? Yeah, so we, it would basically replace all of the mechanical that's providing the zone coverage now.
Okay, so do, any more questions? I'm very sorry to ask for comments or questions. Okay, and we did that emotion, motion and the second over here, so call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Hi.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Okay, so now I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, so everybody can go home except for us.
So we have the.
Close session, that's what I was gonna say.
So are we going to meet in this building, or what's?
Parks and Rec.
Goodness.
We're going to Parks and Rec.
We're going to Parks and Rec?
Okay, we're going to Parks and Rec. Which, which is like.
Down the street.
Which is down the street, but totally torn, correct? How wet is the floor? I just want to know.
We're probably going to California Room anyway, but.
Okay, everybody?
Can we just take a quick 10 minutes before we go 15 over there?
It takes about 10 minutes to get there, so we can.
I'm asking if we can take a 15, 20 minute break, so we can, I want to get up. I would like to get up. I've been here just as long as you have, and I'd like to take a short break, because I don't want to hurt anything.
Okay, children. Can we take a 15 minute break? We'll, we'll be over there, do we want to be there? Do you want to make it 5 o'clock, or do you want 10 o'clock?
About 10 o'clock, ma'am.
10 o'clock, okay.